Good morning and welcome back to our adjourned budget meeting for the Pitt County Commissioners. And we'll start by turning it over to our manager and delivering our next person.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Before we do that, for the Board of Enduligree, just a few follow-ups from the last Board Workshop on the Budget for Fiscal Year 1920. From the presentations on Monday, just a couple of follow-ups. One is on body cameras. We did a, actually Finance Department did a survey of all the counties east of I-95 regarding the use of body cameras. And I know Commissioner Perkins-Williams had asked that specifically and we wanted to answer that. We've got something to pass out of the counties we got up with. I think there was a total of how many counties?
So we called 36 counties yesterday. We heard about 26, we heard about one this morning, so 27 of the 36 counties east of I-95. We heard about 16 do not have body cameras and 11 do. You says 10 on your paper, but we got one in this morning. What you will see is body cameras vary from size, location, there's no rhyme or reason. And there's probably deeper discussion. You probably have to talk to individual counties to find out why they have or don't have.
Then another aspect on the body camera discussion, Finance Department did do some quick grant Googling, let's say, in terms of grant opportunities. And they're telling us that there are some grant opportunities out there, as the Sheriff was alluding to. So we feel like that there's a good possibility we might be able to get that 50/50 percent grant participation. But keep in mind that normally, normal cases, the grant is like a one-year for that first year. So in 1920, we might get 50 percent. But then that means though, in the next year, 2021, the budget grows a little bit in order to keep the full program into place. Not trying to argue not to do it, I just want to point to the boomerang effect it may have in the following year.
And that doesn't include the personnel that we would need to implement, the storage and whatever, I don't know.
Well, at this point in time, the Sheriff has not requested any additional personnel. So I guess we could assume that she will repurpose existing personnel if that were to become a need.
Okay.
Or otherwise, you'd hear from her at some point for additional personnel, if that was the case.
Do you need anything from us relative to heading in that same direction? That's kind of, I thought was the general feeling of everybody, was just to keep on investigating and...
What I would recommend for the body cameras would be to kind of maybe threefold. One, let's wait and see what the renegotiated fed bed rate is. Right now, it's $78 per day, per federal inmate. Fully loaded cost, the consultant delivered, I think it was 108. We're not expecting 108, we're expecting somewhere between those two points, maybe like 90, low 90s. That, we said, if it was in the low 90s, would yield about close to 150 or 200.
If you were taking the budget from $996,450 to $1,146,000.
I think it was like 100, yeah, about 150, 156,000. So if that revenue comes in, then we also ran an analysis on how many, I still think we should only budget for 35 fed beds and not up that number. But we ran an analysis, is this it here? Okay, run through it. How about you do it?
So right now in our budget, we budget $75 and 35 inmates per day, and that's how we get to the $996,450,000. So that basically equates to $28,470 per inmate for an entire year. If we were to simply just increase the fed bed calculation, we'd have to change it from 35 inmates to 55 inmates if the county were to fully fund the $544,000.
So that assumes the fed bed would say, 78 is all you're getting, we're not renegotiating. It would then take an average of 55 over the course of the year to pay for the body cameras.
Sheriff Danz mentioned there were some grants out there, one that she had to do about that was half the cost. If we do it on a half-cost basis, then you take your 35 current to 45 inmates per year. On the previous slide I just showed you, those were links to some grant opportunities that we found looking yesterday. We have not dived deep into those grants to tell you what the percentages are, what they fund and what they don't fund currently, but we know there's opportunities out there.
Let's go back to the previous slide and let your camera go.
Well, instead of listing them all out, some of these links actually do list multiple grant opportunities. So even at this point in time, I can't even tell you if we qualify directly for them, but it's out there. And another thing that I want to point out, I know this is kind of hard to read, but this is on your list. These are the counties that we did talk to specifically, the wise saying, yes, they have cameras, and the no's that do not. In talking to them specifically, some were very eager to share their opportunities that they had discovered. So we think there's opportunities for us out there. We also think there may be some opportunities to look at maybe accomplishing the same thing at a cheaper price. I think the Sheriff's presented you with the $545,000. I believe that may be on the hiring. If I'm the Sheriff, I don't want to come back to you later and ask for more money. In talking to some of these counties, there may be some opportunities on the data stores that may be able to save us some money. So if we do decide to drop back and punt, I think there may be some opportunities that we work with the Sheriff's Office to get their needs at a cost-effective price.
Yes, ma'am.
Compared to population, looking at this map, this question came into mind. Which one of these counties with the wise, oh, how do we compare population-wise with what we're dealing with over here?
It's all over the place.
Which one?
It's all over the place.
All over the place?
Yeah. A perfectly good example, New Hanover County where Wilmington is and Cumberland County where Fayetteville, those are the two largest sheriff departments in eastern North Carolina. New Hanover County has cameras, Cumberland County doesn't.
Our surrounding counties, Martin has them, Beaufort.
And the population for Martin is less than ours, isn't it?
Oh, yeah.
But then Wilson County doesn't have it. Wayne County just came in this morning, they do have them. Lenore County has them, Jones County, Craven County doesn't.
Oh, shucks.
So it's all over the spectrum.
Is there a crime rate higher? Is there a greater need?
That's what I say, like, I think there's another step to the analysis of why, and it could be a sheriff by sheriff, for preference to have cameras or not have cameras.
And also my other question, and if y'all want to just come back later on this, is I know that the biggest majority of the cost was the data stores. Do we know how much the data storage is going to cost each year that we're going to have to budget for?
I don't know that number specifically. But the data storage was one of the things that the counties that were very eager to share, talked about how they researched and found different alternatives. And I guess really, depending on the size of the data that you're going to have to store per deputy, that could vary. Some of these counties that are wise, they only have cameras for their patrol units. So it's not even their whole Sheriff's Office.
That was my question, because I had spoken to a couple of people yesterday at our meeting, and one of them did and one of them didn't, and they said that they were like checked out if they were on patrol, you know, if they were going into something. And there wasn't one for every person that worked, you know, at whatever time. So there are a lot of things that I think that we could research and find that would make this more cost-effective and more efficient if we decide to go down this way. I appreciate that.
What were you getting me? The geographical range and the spread of the county of Beaufort, they have them. It's the outlining areas that usually get the weak spots. So I don't know the population of Beaufort County, I never really thought of looking at it. But this does give, and thanks for the map, this does give a good vision of what we're dealing with.
And one other quick point, Sheriff, you talked about revenue sharing based on federal inmates, revenue that we, there's more counties that I contacted, but I didn't hear back from. But basically, all of these counties here follow the same model that we follow. They set a budget, and if they bring in additional revenue above that budget, then the Sheriff, just like any other department, can come back and ask their Board for budget amendment to allocate that money. So our practice that we've had in place along that is pretty standard. Nobody that I talked to, they were actually probably more shocked that I even asked the question. But what we're doing is pretty...
What was the question?
The question was, does the Sheriff's take the fed bed or federal inmate revenue and is it allocated directly back to the Sheriff's Department for any use? And the standard response was, that's general fund revenue. And so in some cases, that revenue helps offset other revenue that comes in shorter or offset expenses that come in a little bit higher. But pretty much, our practice is statewide, as far as I can tell.
One I was trying to clarify, the Detention Center is a currently $15 million operation with $2 million in revenues. So technically, the general fund is subsidizing that operation at $13 million per year. So it's not like it has excess revenue. If it did, then that'd be more of an argument to say, yes, hey, let us spend this money as we see fit, or based upon their needs and justifications.
I think the question is, is that we don't have a problem in terms of realizing that there's a need for body cameras. And listening to the Sheriff yesterday, it seemed to me that, to the extent that you don't know when a person who's going to dash might be able to call out to deal with a situation. I think to deal with this in the sense that we want to be covered at all times, we don't know whether in terms of having a home, you know, if it's, if a body camera is in the back, that's a justification.
So I think the justification that has been made, I think we do need to consider funding. But again, I would wait until, A, the fed bed daily rate has been renegotiated, B, wait for, second, wait until we, after the first quarter of the year's begun, make sure that the average daily count is either at that 45 or 45, 55 number, depending upon whether... Wait and see what type of grant source is researched by the Sheriff's Office for this specific use, to help pay for it, and then come back out and then ask, then the Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Danz could ask for approval to do this and a budget amendment based upon those terms and conditions. I think it looks like a positive forward path going forward. I just don't want to pull that trigger until we know that all the pieces will fall into place.
And if we don't get any of that, will the county be in strait, I'm not saying like a strait, scraps maybe is the word, be in the strait for funding, you know, at least some partial funding or whatever, you know?
So I think best-case scenario, 50 percent grant, fed bed rev, well, that includes fed bed revenue going up from 35 to 45 inmates. One scenario has a daily population of 45 federal inmates, another has a, the worst-case scenario, 55. But that does not include, because we don't know the fed bed rate is going to go from 78 to 90. We have a pretty good confidence level at will, because we've got the justification. We have an outside consultant whose expertise is negotiating this on behalf of counties all across the United States, and he has identified the $108. They never go with that fully-loaded number, it's always some negotiated point in-between. So I mean, I think all the factors are lining up that this can be put into place.
That we will be able to do something.
Right. But I don't think it should be...
Do you need to hear from us relative to moving forward, or is this just a consensus?
I think it would be good to know if you agree with the strategy.
Okay.
Seven, to be clear, Scott, we're making the pursues of body cameras contingent on fed bed revenues coming in to fund it, essentially.
Yeah, I mean, the daily rate, the additional headcount, grant money, the full package.
Right.
And I also think it could end up being even a partial initially, if it doesn't go up besides we think. You know what I'm saying, as far as numbers? I think maybe we need consensus on do we want to move forward.
And I'd like an opportunity, just to compare, I think the Sheriff, that they were looking at for in the comments, I'd like an opportunity to look at this one, which we're considering and the data stores to make sure we're getting the best bank on the bill.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
Exactly. So is that just kind of consensus? Is that all right, or do you want us to take a vote?
No, I don't think you need to vote, but we just have the board's consensus.
Everybody on board, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
In terms of other follow-up, on the sharp position for the Detention Center, we did talk to Trillium Health Resources yesterday, talked to Dave Peterson, who's the regional representative for our area, had a discussion. He was not totally, I guess, in favor of allocating part of our 475,000, almost close to half a million dollars, due to the, what the General Assembly is doing with Medicaid transformation as it deals with mental health. And also, he pointed to the fact that we already have one position at the Detention Center that partially does this type of thing, and that's the jail navigator position that is funded. So at this point in time, we would need either to consider adding that as an additional position to be funded, if the Board would be so inclined, or to delay that to a future point in time.
So do you need to...
Well, just keep that in mind. I would wait until you hear from all the departments, and then if there's things you want to direct us to put back in, you may hear something...
That'll be one of them.
Yeah, DSS, or Health Today, or Education Tomorrow. You may want to wait until you have the full picture in front of you to direct us. The only other thing I have is a follow-up, and it's really not a follow-up, it's just a correspondence that came in yesterday. It's a letter from the Committee of 100 in Pitt County. And as you will recall, the whole Convergent Discussion, P3 Discussion, we got a letter from the Spence Cosby, the Campaign Coordinator for the Public Private Economic Development Partnership. And basically, bottom line, I think we have copies of this to pass out, don't we? Yeah, okay, Kimberly's got them. Bottom line of this is, they're asking the county to consider support of a funding request of $200,000 annually for five years. Now, the county opted not to participate in the Public Private Partnership for Economic Development at this time. I think we were looking at $500,000 a year for five years. We said that we would consider being an investor, but the investor levels at that point in time had not been determined as to, you know, whether you're at, hey, I know you don't like this gold, silver, and bronze-type level of investment. We still don't know what those levels are. And this letter does not indicate golds, so we don't know what level we're coming in at, even if you were willing to do it at $200,000 a year. And I will say, we have not included this, nothing's included so far in this year's, next year's budget for consideration of this type of request. But I did want you to see this, I want you to give us direction at some point as to, maybe you want us to go back to them and say, well, wait a minute, tell us what your investment levels are. They are starting their campaign to raise money in the private sector, so I would think that the defined levels of gold, silver, and bronze, or however they're going to denote those, would be out there. If you want us to research and find that out, bring it back to you, that might be a fair question.
Scott, I think finding out something else about...
Tongue-tied. Finding out something else is a good idea. However, until we get the new Director of, you know, Development, I think we ought to just put this on a back burner. If we get the right person, I believe that we could still contribute money to this. I think $200,000 is kind of high, but, you know, to have a seat at the table. But I think if we get the right dynamic person in, is they can be working with this Convergent Group in collaboration without actually having to jump in $200,000 worth.
And as we heard yesterday, the Secretary of Economy was at our meeting, so when we get that new person for development, that person should be connected up with Copeland, who's our secretary.
True, but it's also...
Pitt County's kind of in the driver's seat on this, because we have statutory authority over industrial development. And if the city gets industrial development, they actually have, who's the guy, Keenan from Raleigh that talked to them? Can't think of his name.
Chris Chung.
Yeah. From what I understand, he basically said to the city, you get a good lead on industrial development, great, give it to the county, because they're the ones that have that authority, not you.
He's the Executive Director of EDDC.
If I might, just to clarify too, I think your request here is, because the county didn't want to participate directly, i.e. have a board vote, the Pitt County Development Commission will have a vote, and it will have that. So this is treating the county as a separate entity, not the Pitt County Development Commission as an autonomous body. So this, I think the request, if I understand it correctly, is for the county to purchase a seat at the table and a vote. And that would be our Board, not the Pitt County Development Commission's Board, because that Board will have a seat at the table. Treating the two entities as, you know, separate. So I think that's important to understand when we're talking about an investment. This is our group investing, not the Pitt County Development Commission. That's the way that I understand this letter as I read it right now.
Yes, I agree.
In the structure, so...
It's one of the most poverty-stricken areas. I've not had the privilege of serving in development, and my exposures to development has been when I've gone to meetings. And I purposely made a point of looking in, I remember asking Janice when we first went to the federal legislature to go with me to the, so I could get me my thought, my exposure involved in tuning into economic development. Wanda had cleared up that our development is industrial. To me, development was development. So I had to first separate economic development from commercial development. So now that I am at economic and that separation, my district need development, I can't walk, we cannot, we cannot, the most of us cannot drive less than five miles to any kind of development for this county. And what I'd like to see happen, and that's not just for my district, but for other places that have improprieties, I'm finding some good words I haven't used in a long time, some improprieties with access to development. Because when we drive farther, our budget go less, our families get less, the bread costs more, the milk is more. And I'm arguing, not necessarily for me, I'm arguing for the least of us, and the farthest way of us have the opportunity to development. And as far as representation, no pardon, no worry. I want the county, because it's charged with it, to have a better, a more fuller seat in, and certainly, if I say, your vision is a good vision, but it ain't like mine. So you understand what I'm saying? It takes more of us, and I'm not trying to insult you or anything, but people get to see what I'm talking about, when you understand. We don't see the same thing. And then if you've got somebody, a twin brother, he ain't going to see just like you either. So you understand, I want you to know that. Because I don't want anybody to think I'm picking on anybody. But scenarios is a way I use to explain, I come up in an area that is not as educated as you are, so it take a little of that for me, so you know what I'm talking about. So, you know, we need some development, and we need it fuller in this county than just green deal. And we have not had it in the outlying area. So that's my country's support of those residents who live in those poverty hubs. I want you to understand especially, and this Ford to know where I'm coming from. Because my, our budgets don't go that far, and I can't walk to anything a grocery store.
If I must say one other thing, going back to this, and again, who's going to be hired as a new Director of Development? I'm hearing that there are some people that want to push that back. The closing was supposed to be the end of this month, as far as getting, you know, interviews set up and with them. Now they're wanting to push it back? I'm not sure exactly who, but I've heard that there's some that are wanting to push it back.
We have to discuss that in the PCDC meeting, so if that's, that would be a rumor, and this is not, yeah, this is ongoing, I mean...
Supposed to, 30/30.
Is $200,000 a magic number or something? Because it was, like Gladys Knight said, it was in the grapevine before all of this. So I don't know what...
$100,000 is too much money. We want to have a developmental...
Hopefully, we'll be in, we'll be able to communicate with all parties, whether we have a seat at that table or not.
The bottom line is, I'm not sure that the budget workshop is where we need to be talking about this. We made a decision about going with our being the job that we have as far as County Commissioners, as far as development is concerned. We have reached out and said that we would, you know, and like you said, we have a seat at the table. And my understanding that this group is also reaching out to each one of our municipalities for them to make a contribution based on their population, from the smallest to the largest. I may, that may be erroneous too, I've just heard that, but...
That goes back to when we were sitting in the meeting, they were talking about a dollar a person.
Right, but that is the, that is what they are doing. We have reached out, talked to them about being collaborative, just like you said, Tom. And I think this needs to kind of be put over here, we don't need to make a decision on anything right now until, you know, we hear more and go to a meeting and get our person. My understanding is, we've got some good applicants, excellent applicants, in fact. I've seen some of the names, I've seen a couple of the resumes. And so I think we're going to have a good person in here to lead us, I feel like we will. And I would not want to make a decision, for the Commissioners to make a decision based on this, without that person in place.
Sheriff, first of all, I mean, I would like to ask that maybe we follow up to see if we can know what the subscription levels are going to be. Just to be clear, because we want to make that differentiation, that in any investment that would be separate from the county would not be the Pitt County Development Commission's investment, which would be, you know, a decision made by that Board that's autonomous from this Board.
I suspect that $200,000 is based on the population of Pitt County, which is...
Yes.
That comes out to roughly $200,000.
That's why you talk about that, that's what I'm thinking too.
Okay. So is it okay if we move away from this and get back on our job today? Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. I mean, if you have anything else, it's okay, Scott. Thank you for bringing the stuff back from the Sheriff for us to...
I do have a question, though, something that Brian said yesterday is relevant. You said that you wanted to take the development monies and break it out separate, just like fire taxes in the county. Now, you proposed a 72.9 cent tax rate. Does that include the development, or is the development going to be a separate penny out here?
Actually, that 72.9 includes the penny you're talking about.
Okay, all right, just clarity, that's all I want.
What we're trying to do on the tax bill, though, is break it out at 70 point, 71.9 general fund, a penny for industrial development, so thus the net effect is 72.9. Like you just said.
Okay. And I meant to acknowledge at the beginning that Commissioner Fitzpatrick and Albright are not here today. Commissioner Albright is going, I mean, Fitzpatrick is going to try to get back if he can before we're over, but I just wanted to acknowledge that, that they had been excused. And can we move on? Are we ready? Public health, Amy Haddam, if you would come forward.
I'm Amy Haddam, I'm the interim Public Health Director, and my normal role... And my normal role is health education director and public information officer for public health, but I'll be doing the interim role for a few more weeks now. I guess you saw the news yesterday that we have hired a new public health director, Dr. John Silvernell, will start with us on July the first. Marcia Hall is our budget officer. And together, we've prepared this presentation. And since many of you are new to the Board of Commissioners, we felt like we needed to give you an overview of our services so you can understand why some of the, our requests that we're making to continue our services. Many people in the community say that public health is one of the best-kept public secrets in the county, and we certainly agree with them. We also wanted to point out that we are an accredited local health department. Just a few weeks ago in March, we were reaccredited by the North Carolina Local Health Department Accreditation Board. We were reaccredited with honors, meaning that we did meet all one hundred and forty-seven of the required activities. We were very proud of that. And actually tomorrow, we do go before the state accreditation board to make it final and to receive our plaque that will be displayed in our agency for our clientele to see. We are governed by an eleven-member Board of Health. Dr. Keith Ramsey is our physician and our chair. Dr. Mark Hayes, our veterinarian, our vice chair. Commissioner Coulson, Tom Coulson represents this board. Dr. Ladi Akok, our optometrist. Tina Dixon, an at-large member. Rex Fleming, an at-large member. Natasha Patidar is our pharmacist. Porter Stokes, at-large. Dr. Martha Engelke is our nurse representative. Dr. Adam Harrell, our dentist. And Lowell Spate, our engineer. Our mission, to protect, promote, and assure the health of all people in Pitt County. And we do this, we protect people from unnecessary environmental risks such as exposure to lead, foodborne diseases, waterborne diseases, and other communicable diseases. We promote individual and community health behaviors which increase the span of a healthy life. We assure access to essential preventive health services for all people. And we are first responders. All Pitt County Health Department staff members, regardless of our discipline, we are first responders. And we're required to work during times of emergency and natural disaster to ensure that we're protecting the population health of the county. So our agency is directed by a dual role, health director and medical director, who is a physician, and serves under the direction of the Board of Health. And we have five managers who oversee the work of public health. And these divisions include environmental health, personal health, administration, health education, and nutrition. And we have over a hundred and thirty positions that make up our staff, numerous disciplines. And these disciplines force a physician, we have nurses, nurse practitioners, nurse midwives, social workers, health educators, nutritionists, outreach workers, lab technicians, administrative clerical staff. We do have a dentist now and dental clerical staff, as well as our environmental health specialist. So a few of the services that we offer, that these disciplines provide. Services for children, we do a lot of home visits, newborn assessments in the home, well child checkups, childhood immunizations. We also operate the Women Infant and Children Program, nutrition services to ensure our children are getting adequate nutrition. We provide care coordination for children up to age five, lead screening up to age six, sickle cell testing and counseling, and dental care for children in our mobile dental unit, Smile Safari, which moves around from school to school. And you'll hear a little bit more about that in a little bit. We also offer services for women, and some of these are for men too, but primarily for women. Pregnancy testing, our prenatal clinic offers outreach and support as well, childbirth education. I hope you've all heard of triple P positive parenting with all the numerous billboards we have around the county that a grant pays for that. That is a great program that we've had for a few years. Again, the WIC program, breastfeeding education and support, family planning, including birth control methods, and breast and cervical cancer screening. General services for adults, cholesterol, diabetes, and blood pressure screenings, immunizations, TB testing and follow-up, a huge one, sexually transmitted diseases, testing and treatment, and communicable disease control. And service eligibility for these services, our fees for these services are based on income and family size. So a person's ability to pay would be according to what their fee would be. We also offer environmental health services. Many people in the county do not realize that environmental health services falls under the public health umbrella. They're one of our divisions. And our public health, environmental health specialists, they inspect public food establishments, childcare centers, schools, the hospital. They also evaluate soil for suitability, on-site wastewater systems, inspect public swimming pools, which is getting ready to be a busy time for them right now. And they provide surveillance and control of mosquitoes, which is also gonna soon be another busy time. There again, we do provide community education, presentation, consultation, program development, flu shots, and other immunizations in the community. Any way that we can reach out to the community to protect the population's health. A lot of people also do not realize that the health director is a local registrar for all birth and death certificates occurring in Pitt County. There are over three thousand births and over twenty-four hundred deaths that occur annually in Pitt County that are processed through our agency. And approximately two thousand of these births and thirteen hundred of these deaths are Pitt County residents. So funding that supports public health programs. For fiscal year eighteen nineteen, our revenue were eleven million, seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars. And as of March thirty-first, when Marcia was preparing to submit our budget estimates, our revenue at that point that we collected was seven million, nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand and sixty dollars. So our expenses as of March thirty-first were seven million, nine hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. So at that time, our revenue were greater than our expenses by forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars. So we're glad to see that. Our proposed budget for fiscal year nineteen twenty, it is an increased amount. We are asking for twelve million, eleven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars. But do note that seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two of this amount is required by the auditors for payroll accrual. I know Brian can speak more to that if you have questions about that. So a breakdown of our revenues for twenty twenty. Twenty-seven percent of our revenue is state and federal at three million, three million, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars. We are asking for the county appropriation of a little over six million dollars, which would be fifty percent of our budget. Fees and charges, one million, five hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars, thirteen percent of the budget. And then our fund balance at six percent, which is seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and one dollars. And then miscellaneous revenue at four percent, which would be forty, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And the way our proposed expenditures are broken down, seventy-seven percent of this budget is salary and fringe, nine million, two hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars. Operating would be twenty-three percent at two million, seven hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and one dollars. And that comprises the eleven million, nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five. But then again, that additional seventy-four thousand, eight eighty-two is what brings it to the twelve million dollars. So grant-funded programs, over four million dollars currently in grants are brought into Pitt County from national, state, and local funders. In addition to state and federal grants, we also receive grants from Vida Medical Center Foundation, the Martin Pitt Partnership for Children, better known as Smart Start, United Way, Blue Cross Blue Shield, the Duke Endowment, KB Rentals, and local service clubs like Kiwanis or Rotary for, you know, various purposes. In addition, we house regional public health programs that serve Pitt and our neighbor counties. We get several grants from the state that ask us to be the hub for that money, and we serve our neighboring counties. And because of our strong management team, we're able to leverage our existing infrastructure to obtain and administer a wide array of grants that are provided to the citizens of Pitt County and beyond. And we also pass a lot of grant funds to other entities, with your permission of course. We always bring that value before we do that. This past year, we did send or pass two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Vida Medical Center so that they could operate with their school nurse program, five additional school nurses, in addition to those that they already fund. We also passed a hundred thousand to Vida for the Active Routes to Schools campaign because they already have an infrastructure to implement that program. And then we pass funds to organizations like Picasso, the Pitt County Coalition of Substance Abuse, and then a local needle exchange program. And there again, we do not pass those funds without that permission from this board first. So this brings us to the justification for our additional request for twenty twenty. I do want to preface this by saying that our work is driven by the needs of the community. And as a requirement of the Department of Health and Human Services, we partner with our local hospital to conduct a community health needs assessment, which examines the health status of the county. And it provides a focus for us to address the highest health needs of the county. So once that needs assessment is completed, we do that every three years, we bring the findings from that back to our Board of Health so that they can select priority areas for a focus on for a three to four-year period. So in February of two thousand and nineteen, our management team participated in a strategic planning session with our Board of Health. And the community health needs assessment was shared with board members. Upon reviewing the data from that, the Board of Health decided to focus on four priority areas for the next three years. The largest one, or the one with the most focus that I'm gonna talk about in a minute, is infant mortality prevention, followed by chronic disease prevention and control, risk factor reduction, including physical activity, nutrition, substance abuse, including tobacco, and then sexually transmitted disease prevention and control. So the top health priority selected by the board for the next three years, again, was infant mortality. And that is defined as a death of a baby who's born alive but dies before reaching his or her first birthday. So looking at this graph, let me explain what this will explain to you. The reason the Board of Health selected this health priority is due to the high infant death rate in Pitt County. Our infant death rate remains higher than the state's rate. This graph represents the disparity between the white non-Hispanic, which you see the bars on your left, and the African-American non-Hispanic infant mortality rate. As you see, the white rate did reflect in the left bars that it had begun to slowly climb, beginning in two thousand and ten, but it began to decrease again between two thousand and thirteen to seventeen. And although the African-American rate continues to be two to three times the white rate in our county, the five-year average between years seventeen and eighteen does reflect a decline in the rate among our African-American population. So over the past thirty-plus years, we've implemented many interventions that have helped to reduce the infant mortality rate in our county. However, recent cut to grant funds are now endangering the level that we can continue to address infant mortality in the community. This scares us a little bit because we can't let our guard down and stop supporting programs that are saving our babies in our county because infant mortality is an indicator of the overall health of our population. So that leads to our first ask. We, to continue to address infant mortality, we are requesting two full-time equivalent infant and postpartum home visiting nurses to provide in-home assessments to low-income mothers and babies who are either at high risk for having an infant death or who are Medicaid recipients. And the rationale behind this, women who receive home visits are more likely to have better overall health, more likely to breastfeed, which is the best form of infant nutrition, are more likely to have better newborn parenting skills, more likely to receive help for postpartum depression, and their infants are more likely to enter care with a pediatrician to receive well-child care and immunizations. And then the home visit also provides the opportunity for the nurse to conduct an environmental assessment of the home, the environment there, to identify any concerns and any safety issues. And I also need to share that nearly sixty percent of Pitt County births are the mothers who are Medicaid recipients. This equals over one thousand babies that we could be reaching out to. But currently, we have two temporary part-time nurses who are providing the service. However, they're retirees. They may not continue to work with us for much longer because they don't have to. In addition to them being part-time, they can't, the reason that they're part-time, they are not able to provide services to all of the babies and moms that would need it. So by employing those two new full-time nurses, we would be able to serve a larger population in need and also help improve the health of both mother and baby. The personnel cost for these two nurses is a hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars. But I do need to remind you, these are revenue-generating positions, meaning we can bill for these home visits and get a reimbursement back of a hundred and twenty dollars per home visit. So in time, it would pay for itself for both of these positions. So that was our ask for funding those two positions. We also had another ask. We're also asking for eighty thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars to sustain two-point-eight full-time outreach workers who have been working to provide services to high-risk pregnant and postpartum women by addressing the social determinants of health, you know, food, housing, transportation, jobs, other forms of support, which are all contributing factors to poor birth outcomes and infant death. These two outreach workers have been extensions of our social workers. Our social workers can only provide so much support because of the high caseload that they have. But our social workers identify the mothers who are at the highest risk of having either a poor birth outcome and infant death, and they are assigned to the outreach workers. So the outreach workers, there again, they're providing the care to the women who need it the most. This program has been very successful for the past twenty-four years. As the mothers enrolled in the program learned how to care for themselves and their children, how to become self-sufficient, and the babies enrolled in the program have thrived. So we know the program works. But here's our dilemma. This year, when it was time to reapply for funding, the state decided to go with new projects, new evidence-based interventions. So our program here in Pitt County, as well as other programs across the state that have been in existence for many, many years, ours had been funded since nineteen ninety-five. The program was cut. Our Board of Health, during our last few meetings in our strategic planning session, they're very concerned that the elimination of this program will have a negative impact on the health and survival of Pitt County babies. Again, this is a low-cost program. We have two-point-eight outreach workers that it will fund. Their personnel cost is seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars, a very small operating cost of two thousand, seven hundred and one dollars, for a total of eighty thousand, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And if the county, if county funding is not provided, then this program will end next month. So they're hanging on just a little while longer. We've not been able to secure any additional funding. We can apply in three years for state funding again, but that program, that opportunity will not come up until then for the Healthy Beginnings program for the state. We also had another position ask, and this was for a dental assistant. As some of you recall, last year, we were struggling because our contracted dentist that operated dental services within Smile Safari Mobile Dental Unit, he retired, and it was hard to find a replacement to continue to provide those services to Medicaid children who are in need. Then the mobile dental unit's been providing those services for many years, moving from school to school, and then in the summer, being at the Boys and Girls Club. And last year, due to grant funds from Grady White Foundation, we were able to get the unit back out to the schools. We worked through Bernstein, a federally qualified health center partner. We contracted with them to provide services on a temporary basis until we could get a dentist on board. And that was approved last year for us to hire a full-time dentist, thank you very much, because we have hired one and we have a full-time dentist. Dr. Kimberly Vincent is now serving children through Smile Safari as, you know, for this year, and it's moving from school to school. And since she has come aboard, the number of children served who've never seen a dentist before has increased. She's now seeing about fifty children per week at the schools. So that's an increase than what has been seen before because she is working full-time. However, since she is seeing so many more children, she needs some help. And so we're asking for a dental assistant to be able to help her provide these services to the children within the mobile dental unit. And the cost that we will be asking for the county is twenty thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars because Medicaid reimbursement will pay for the remaining part of that position. And there again, that's, it's point eight oh, not a full-time because the services are provided to the children Monday through Thursday between the hours of eight and three, you know, school getting out at three. Dr. Vincent uses Fridays for her paperwork and outreach, so the dental assistant would not be needed full-time, just point eight oh. So the summary for the positions that we're asking for fiscal twenty twenty, again, it's the two full-time nurses to conduct infant postpartum home visits to improve birth outcomes and prevent infant death. Again, that's a hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars. It is a billable service, in time, it will pay for itself. We're also asking to sustain the two-point-eight oh outreach workers to provide support to mothers at high risk of experiencing infant death at a cost of eighty thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. And then again, the one-point-eight oh full-time. And then again, the 1.80 full-time dental assistant to serve additional children. And the county cost of that will be $20,469. Additional requests, one was for cubicle and office space. We are in need of additional space to accommodate our growing workforce and students. Office space is very limited for staff and students. We recently, recently began denying student internships because we have no place to house them. And that does bother us for two reasons. One, that is free labor that we can be using to help with our workforce. But not only that, it, it is, we're not able to have the opportunity to continue to train our future public health workforce. That's two reasons why we're asking for space to house them. Modification of space, formerly housing, our paper medical records prior to the implementation of our electronic health record would be ideal for that. The cost, Marsha had gotten some estimates somewhere around $100,000 to do that. As you see this picture, you'll see where the boxes are sitting on the right-hand side, that, that area used to contain medical records, paper medical records, like the two racks behind that. We are slowly getting rid of those records, archiving them, since we are switching over or have switched over to all electronic health records. So, that space would be ideal for us to add some walls, some cubicle areas. It'd be a lot cheaper than us renting somewhere or trying to house staff somewhere else. We wouldn't be paying an extra utility cost. It's all right there within our building. We just need funding to help reorganize that space. Part of our ask also was to continue to support our electronic health record. We knew when the record was launched over a year ago that there would be some monthly cost to that. And again, Epic connects us with ECU School of Medicine Clinics, VITIT Medical Center, UNC Duke, and many other health entities that we need to correspond with when we're serving some of the same patients. We continue to use VITIT for our vendor support. The monthly cost of that is $6,100, so $73,200 annually to support Epic. That's part of our increase in our ask for this year. Other reasons, we're also asking for $20,000 increase in pharmacy contracts due to additional duties that have been assigned to pharmacists as mandated by NCDHHS. We also are in line for some computer upgrades. We're also anticipating a reduction in Medicaid due to Medicaid reform launching in our region in February of 2020. So, we needed some additional revenue to maybe offset that. We're seeing a reduction in WIC funding across the state because the WIC clientele has decreased across the state. So, we need funding in that area, too. And then, increase in retirement rate, potential cost of living, our employee performance increases, and of course, additional cost for the new medical director, as was discussed at one of the last Board of Commissioner meetings, was an additional cost for that. So, the summary for 2020, the total budget that we are requesting, $12,017,67. Again, the county appropriation is about half of that, $6,210,000. And then, an increased county appropriation, our total was $741,901 is what we're asking for in increase for this year. So, looking at a glance at past fiscal years, you can see that we haven't changed too much from going from 17 to 20. In 2017, it was, you know, a little over $10 million. We moved up to a little over $12 million. But then again, that is due to the 70-some thousand added for the payroll accrual. And then, you can see that as far as the FTEs, we've not increased that much. The FTEs for 19 and 20, that was a big jump from 2017, but it does include our grant staff in there. So, that concludes our presentation for our ask. Do you have any questions?
Pass, we'll start over here, Melvin. If you have questions or comments, then go around.
Oh, yeah. Thank you for the presentation. Very good presentation. Only infant mortality rate among the African-Americans. What are you doing proactively to, to deal with some of that? Are you, if it's into, I notice you, if it's some churches, and I think that's one of the key, key area, all you're still doing in and out, how effective have that been?
Yes, sir, it has been very effective. We have a infant mortality group called PIMPAC. It's the Pitt Infant Mortality Prevention Advisory Council, P-I-M-P-A-C. Has about 100 members. We're the oldest advisory council in the state of North Carolina. We've been going strong for well over 30 years. And we do have some members of the faith community on that council. We still do presentations to churches, and we go out into various civic groups. We have numerous grants that are, including the Healthy Beginnings Program that address infant mortality, that are outreach programs in the community. We have a Healthy Start Program that does the same thing, where we actually locate women in the community that need services and get them plugged into those services. And it's multi-layered. Even the home visitation program is part of that. You know, most of the time, when women have their baby in the hospital, they have all the support they need there in the hospital, but it's when they go home that they don't always have that support or know where to go to for resources. That's why it's so important for us to get in the home, and we are doing that. We just need to be able to do more of it. Yes, we also have our centering program, which is a program where we do group prenatal, where women can come in and get prenatal care within a group, and it in turn turns into a support group. That's another thing that we do. It's multifaceted. Over the last 30-some years, we've added so many programs, and that's why we don't want to lose anything. Just want to make sure that we continue to lower that rate.
Thank you. And I think this, I like this report. It gives the actual number, and it then gives the percentages because percentages can be skewed. So, I really like that part, that we get to see the actual numbers. Don't have page numbers, but I'm referring to your vital record slide.
Right.
That was the first one that jumped out at me. And when you said that approximately 2,000 of the births was Pitt County residents, babies.
Right.
And my question came, I wonder why we have 13,000 deaths.
1,300.
Thir, um, yes, I made it wrong, I'm sorry. 1,300 deaths of Pitt County residents when we, we're a progressive county. And I, that was, that was a bit surprising.
Right.
But even though I know.
It is, yes, it is. And heart disease, stroke, cancer, those are our leading causes, old age, right.
Well, I've been, I've been.
Stress.
So, I, you know, there's some things, and there's been people in my district who, people found dead for none of those reasons. But what get me, what I tell them, I say, plant a cabbage and a collar, and your health will be better and you can live longer. But I want you to know that this, this one right here that goes into the statistics and the 2,000, the 1,300 was the births. I'm curious as to the attributing factors, and that's a curiosity.
For infant death, you're asking, what's contributing factors to that or death overall?
No, it was the babies.
Oh, now that, now that number is.
I mean, and past, and past people.
Okay, the contributing factors to infant death, prematurity is the leading cause. Babies that are born, most of these babies never make it home from the hospital. They're born extremely premature. And prematurity meaning anything before 37 weeks of a person's pregnancy. And that is the leading cause, birth defects, sudden infant death syndrome. We don't have too much of that in Pitt County anymore because of our Back to Sleep campaign, but it's usually prematurity. But lifestyle of mom is a huge factor. So, overall health is paramount, making sure that women are healthy, called preconception health.
With the vote and the veto of the governor the last time, there has been a lot of phone calls relating to that vote and the veto and that sort of thing.
Now, those, those deaths, that would not be included in this count.
They wouldn't be included.
These are babies that are born alive, have a birth certificate, and they're planning to go home from the hospital with mom, but it doesn't happen.
And these are births that are born alive.
They are born alive.
That they would talk, not, not, not.
Oh, okay.
I'm talking about that vote.
Right.
And I'm quite trying to equate that with the health situation. And I'll talk to you more privately about it because I need some personal knowledge as to.
Be glad to.
And people, you know, we do need to understand that because it's a very important vote for us.
Be glad to talk to you.
Thanks, thanks, Amy, for coming. Thank you both. Couple of questions. One, you mentioned on the full-time nursing positions that some of those services would be billable.
Right.
So, you do expect some additional revenues to come back from county. Would the current debate in Raleigh right now on Medicaid, would that affect potential funding for those, those services that are being rendered and, and monies that would potentially come back for the county for those public services? Yes, specifically here.
Would it cost the county additional money as well to? I think DSS has alluded that it would cost the county, as she will, when she comes forward, Medicaid expansion, but on the health side, health department, would Medicaid, would our bottom line increase with the general fund appropriation too help because of expansion?
I, I'm reading the Medicaid expansion, we may have to add more positions for the 6,000 that I think the county, that Medicaid expansion will benefit from.
Right.
But none of the white papers are showing much of the detail of that Medicaid expansion that I've seen anywhere.
Of course, that will be more women that will be eligible for these home visitation services.
But those services would be billable and potentially we would receive the revenues back. Okay. Thanks. Now, the second is just on the dental assistant. Have, have you all had discussions with school dentistry about, and I guess currently, are there, are there plans to have dental assistants to, to come in?
I offered them the bus. I was like, take the bus.
Fill the, fill the, fill the need just, you know, for clinical hours and training. Is that, is there a potential there to not hire those positions but to fill them through the school of dentistry?
There is no plan to fill that position through the dental school. The dental school has, from what I've been told by the dental school, they have a lot of community dentists already filling their need in the clinic. They're using adjunct teaching. The dental school have no desire to help us with the dental work, so we pitched out with them, we had numerous meetings, that Memorial had numerous meetings. We thought it could be a very reciprocal, they could put a junior faculty member, you know, fit their mission as far as school health. We were hoping to lease the bus to them. I threw out all kinds of options, thought that they will take it, and they, they happened.
So, the answer is not yet?
Correct. The Bernstein clinic came there on a rescue. They enjoyed that model because you have a building, no, no show ready. We go to seven pool schools in Pitt County. The bus is getting some age on it, but Dr. Vincent is enthusiastic, she is seeing kids. The problem is, is these kids have never seen a dentist. And it is scary, it's scary for me at 43 to get to a dentist, because I know it's going to cost me, and I don't know what's going to happen. But for a five, six-year-old that's never seen a dentist, that may not even have their speech because they don't have their teeth. So, it's a very, it's a very rude experience.
And, and actually, this summer, we are moving the unit to the health department for the, I don't know if it's the first time, it's the first time we've done that with having a dentist on site. So, we, we feel like we'll be able to serve even more children because, you know, most people know where the health department is.
I know, but we couldn't find a dentist, it was very scary and very stressful because we need, we needed dental work.
Looking for funds to do that.
We do have Smith Family Partnership really wants to come on board. The bus is 22-years-old. We use HIS, which is the Health Information System, which we're going away, that's why we went to Epic, which we're even knew, we're talking with VITIT about using Dentrix, and Dentrix is the, the global dental software that interfaces with Epic. So, I mentioned to Mr. Scott that that would be something on the horizon, but yeah, we're very excited to see children being seen with us.
Thank you both for your presentation. I'm really, I'm really relieved to hear that our infant mortality is still, especially among African-Americans, is still high. I thought it had gone down.
It has. If you go back and look at this 30-year tracking, it has gone down, but it's just not gone down as fast as we like to. And I'll tell you something else that's started to happen. There used to be a huge disparity between the white and the non-white rate. And it still is, but the white rate's going up a little bit. So, that's not how we like to narrow the disparity. But the white rate is starting to go back down a little bit, looking at five-year averages between 13 to 17, those, those last few years. And the African-American rate did go down. And that's why we're so afraid for any program that we get rid of that we know is a support program and that we're going to take a beating again, so.
And I'm thinking that mothers not being able to have care before birth because of not having insurance or Medicaid coverage, how much do you think that plays into healthcare before birth?
Well, preconception help is huge because, you know, the healthier you are before you conceive, the healthier your pregnancy is going to be. So, and right on down to your lifestyle.
Yeah.
We have had huge preconception campaigns over the years where we would go into businesses and work with women, and not just women, men too, you know, because both men and women need to be healthy to, to make sure that they were improving their lifestyle behaviors. And that's what public health is all about, you know, prevention, so.
I just think we, we just have to be aware of the total picture when we're looking at all facets of our community, whether it's economic, you know, whatever, bringing businesses into our community, those businesses are going to look at the health of our, of our community. So, you know, it's not just one piece out there by itself, it's all of it together. And so, the, the healthier our communities is, the, the better, you know. So, I, I just think that if we can, can find a way to offer programs that will produce healthy outcomes, you know, then that's going to be good for, for all of Pitt County.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, it, it just, I, I'm just so bothered by when I hear cuts, you know, that impact healthcare, you know.
Well, that's why we were bothered with when the grant was not funded for the Healthy Beginnings Program because the high-risk women in that program have done very well. And without being part of that program, they probably would not have. And that's about 40 women per year that that program serves, and it follows the babies for two years postpartum, two years after delivery, and plugs the children into resources as well, making sure they're getting healthcare.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
As usual, you've all done a remarkable job.
Thank you.
And I mean that, thank you, with what you give.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I guess for the, the new board members, just to, in terms of grant-funded positions, the board's policy in the past has been when grant funds are received and we hire people for the full-time or part-time, if the monies go away, then technically the positions go away unless you as a board make a decision to fill the gap. In this, in this case, you'd have to fill the gap for these infant mortality positions that were referenced. We did not, I did not recommend them to be filled based upon your policy, but knowing we'd come back before you and ultimately, ultimately, you'd make that decision. This is part of that 45, 46 positions overall that were requested in the budget. As was explained with the budget message, for the most part, what this budget does is continue the existing array of services with the different components. And we talked about the increases in retirement, health insurance, and so forth, as well as just continuing those, showing that three-cent tax increase. So, it, I can, I can look at additional positions, but then I got to find the revenue or I've got to find other programmatic areas to cut to accommodate the inclusion of positions that you may want to include. Or, I mean, I, I'm not advocating. Or, I mean, I, I, I'm not advocating, I wouldn't recommend looking at more than a three cent ad valorem tax rate increase within the general fund. I mean, that's a lot just in, in and of itself. So I was just wondering about that statement.
Three districts are asking for a fire tax, and, and the one I live in, they're asking for two point seven five cents. So you add three cents, two point seven five, now we're talking about almost six percent, I mean, six cents there. So some people are going to get hit potentially disproportionately hard-hearted. The other thing with the Department of Health, typically they have a lot of positions that are not filled, and yet they're budgeted. So by authorizing them these new positions, are they not offset by the fact that none of the other positions are a hundred percent manned all, all through the twelve months?
Well, go back to last year, budget time, Commissioner Coulson, you argued, and we, we put into place a policy with public health that there, there are nurses and like physicians that we did not, we would not make them subject to the thirty-day freeze, that normally all positions are subject to other than public safety, i.e. the sheriff's office, communications, the mess and so forth. But remember though, that thirty-day freeze creates lap salary, that we plug the budget with fund balance of three and a half to four million dollars, four million dollars in this instance. If I don't have that fallback at the end of the day, in the year from June thirtieth, we're going to be spending that fund balance. I know you don't like to hear that, but in order to philosophically to, to plug with fund balance, now we could say, let's don't, let's just stop that practice. Don't plug with fund balance. Well, we could stop that practice, but it's, that four million dollars is equivalent of three pennies on a tax rate. Every penny is one point three million dollars, every three point nine is just shy of a four million. But then we could say, okay, anytime a physician becomes vacant, somebody leaves or is terminated, we can immediately hire it and fill it. Then for the most part, we could then just not have to worry about a fallback, the fund balance plug falling back into the general fund, into savings.
But what about the fact that several of the things that Amy brought up are almost a hundred percent self-paying for? Those positions are not the same as any other position. Not all positions are equal. Would you agree to that? Some, some pay for themselves and some are expenses.
Yeah, we, we looked at those too, and she, she pointed out that two of them would eventually become revenue-producing at a hundred twenty dollars per visit. But it may not be this year, it may be the twenty twenty-one budget. So this year's budget would have to take a hit until they could develop, I guess, the caseload and so forth for those to cover expenses. So that was kind of, if, if they covered expenses this year, I would have said, fine, revenue expense matched, go forth. Again, you as a board could override that.
We have a break on the agenda. Do you want to take a short break? It's ten to ten and we're behind. What's your feelings? Oh, okay. Anybody need a different kind of break? Okay. Well, okay, we will move forward then, Jan, with you, and I think, where are you? There you are. And do we have Andrew? Well, I was wondering if we might.
What time to speak to him? Ten fifty. She's probably going to take.
I'll take about an hour.
Yeah.
Just know, it's going to take about an hour, because you're going to have questions.
Two-minute break.
Great, and our next presentation is from Jan Elliott of Social Services.
Good morning, everybody. I put a sign up that kind of gives you the idea of kind of how I feel these days. It's a crazy time at the DSS, and thought it might be good to have a little humor in this, you know, serious discussion. Because I know it is a serious discussion this year. There's a lot of good stuff going on that is, is potentially at risk because of, of the funding issues. I want to recognize our Board of Social Services. We have two of our members in the back, Mr. Jim Cox, who is our vice chair, and Dr. Sheila Bunch, who is a, a board member. And obviously Ms. Perkins Williams is one of our board members, so we have three present today as part of this discussion. And certainly wanted to recognize them. And the second thing I want to do, which is probably not good for me, but I want to support Amy's budget. Those nurses, those home visits, those kinds of things are one of the prevention issues we have for child welfare. And going into those homes early might, can prevent that shaken baby, it might could prevent that co-sleeping, those kinds of things that result in us get a call in, in child welfare. So I, I hesitate to do that because it may impact my own budget, but it's going to impact my budget either way. If you cut those positions out, I'm afraid we're going to see more Child Protective Services and more potential children coming into foster care because those other children that are in the home might have to come into care. The other issue that I would say too is we work with them very closely, here I go. We work very closely with them, with their CC4C program because of the drug-affected infants. We are getting eight to ten drug-affected infants coming in to referral process with us each month. And we get involved, but also the health department gets involved to make sure that those children are getting what they need. So all of that's really important. So now I've been told I need to talk fast. So I, I do want to thank you for your past support of this department. It has been very important to us. We are a growing county, and this department certainly feels the effects of that. We are no longer the welfare department that you all know and love. We offer opportunities for people to improve their lives. We are about the safety net for supporting the working poor. We are about strengthening families, protection of our most vulnerable, job training, child support. So many other things we do with the Department of Social Services that are, that are not what people automatically think of about us. So we know that strengthening families makes our community stronger, and, and that's, that's what we want to focus on. This budget is about safety for our children and adults who have diminished capacity. It's about reducing trauma, particularly for the children, because it can have a lifelong impact on their success in the world. We're about improved decision-making for the department. We're about timely service delivery. It's about reducing liability to the county and hopefully reducing staff turnover because of all the stress that folks are feeling. I know this budget is a huge ask, and I know the county has some really hard decisions to make, and I certainly want to acknowledge that. A lot of the things that we're asking for this year are things that we've been asking for in years past and have not always not been funded. So they continue to be high issues for us. We have to serve every day, whether we have adequate resources or not. We are required to, to produce and to meet all of the mandates that are out there, and we're held to standards that assume we have adequate staff and to do the job. So my job clearly is to make you aware of the needs that we have. Your job obviously is to try to figure out what you can afford to fund. And so there may be, you know, consequences down the road, and that certainly we all know and understand because there, you have to make these hard decisions. This budget does not reflect anything that might be happening in the legislature. There is talk of some money to help with our adult services programs, although very limited. There's talk about additional cost coming that might be impacting the county that haven't been, you know, plugged into this budget yet, such as a personal care increase allowance for the folks in the special assistance, the, the rest home kind of population, which they desperately need. So, so we don't know what all those things are. We're just trying to juggle it right now. So our critical program impacts that we want to talk about first, again, for those of, you know, several of you have not been part of the agency or the commissioners before. We have a variety of things that drive our budgets, and these are just some of the things that are coming down the pike right now. These are the things that cause me to feel like this. We've got Medicaid transformation, which Amy's already alluded to, that's, will be effective next February. We are, we expect that to impact about seventy to seventy-five percent of our Medicaid population as they move into that managed care system. They will start getting notices in September to try and figure out what they need to do and how they need to sign up and, and all those kinds of things. It will mean changes for social services. It'll mean changes for the transportation department, for the county, for health and for the LME. It's a huge change. It will be more work for the department, at least during the transition, because we've, we've got to help all of our clients who call and say, I don't understand this. I need help with this. I, all those kinds of things. We've got to explain it to people. We have got to make sure that all of the addresses are in the systems correctly because of all the mailings they're going to get so that they can choose their provider as opposed to being self, you know, assigned by the state. So we're beginning to get our staff ready, and there will be more client education in the near future. And it's really a whole new language, PHPs, PMPs, PCPs. It's just a huge, huge change. Medicaid accountability is on this. Last budget, with two thousand seventeen budget, the legislature passed a law in the budget that requires that this county pay back any Medicaid errors that are found. And these are errors that are found during an audit of some sort, be it a federal audit, the single county audit, or a state audit of our programs. And it is, so, so if a case was open for six months and they were ineligible at the time we determined that eligibility, any Medicaid costs that that client incurred during that period of time would be the county's responsibility to pay one hundred percent of that back to the state. Well, you know, for, for a nursing home, you know, that's several thousand dollars a month, plus whatever their medical costs might be. If somebody had a kidney transplant, I mean, you all can just guess or, or figure out what those costs might be. Insurance is being discussed and explored in a variety of counties. That's eighty-five thousand dollars roughly for a county of our size with a ten thousand dollar deductible for each error case that is found. And I hesitate to knock wood, but Pitt County thus far has, has avoided this for the last few years. But several counties have had these chargebacks. It would be difficult for Pitt County to repay a hundred thousand dollars. It would be devastating for Hyde County to pay a hundred thousand dollars. So we're working really hard to try and get the legislature to change that. The legislator who introduced that bill and who has passed that bill is not willing to move. He is not willing to budge, and he is a powerful person in the legislature, so most folks are not willing to step on him and, and, and make those changes themselves.
Now, we have not sought out, we tried to get insurance coverage that you alluded to, but it is being discussed among counties and it's
Right.
a possible option.
Right, and some counties have done that. Again, you're still on the, you know, going to be paying that ten thousand on each case, no matter what. So we're, we're liable for the paybacks. There are also in this law timeliness provisions, takeover provisions of the department and a variety of other kinds of things. So this law drives us greatly in a lot of what we do. The Hawkins case that's referenced here has just been passed down by the federal court. We've paid attention greatly around the areas of applications. That's what all the prior court cases has been. This case, this court case says you've got to do the review timely. If you don't do the review timely, that person could lose their eligibility for Medicaid while you're trying to process that review. So what the state's remedy for that, and what they agreed to, was that we would automatically extend month to month the person's eligibility until that review is done. Obviously, if that person was not eligible, that opens us up to, again, the potential for the claim. And I will say the state auditor got all of the, the audit reports from last year and extrapolated that the counties were in error twenty-one point nine percent of the time, I believe was the number off the top of my head. I'm sorry, twenty-one point nine percent, twenty-one point nine million dollars, let me get that right, out of a seven billion dollar Medicaid payment. So it's a very minor amount, but it, by county is really crazy.
I think when you, when you calculate the percentage on it, it was point zero zero four percent.
So counties are doing a good job, but that one case can, can be significant. Well, oh, and we're also found wrong if we don't approve the person and they were eligible. We have to pay for any Medicaid, any medical costs they would have incurred. So now, child welfare, we have going on, the state's modified manual is being implemented. That is going live on May the fifteenth. We've been working on that for a year or two now. This is going to require a lot more staff to assure safety, more supervisors to assure safety. May result ultimately in our caseload standards being downsized from right now. We have a maximum of ten cases in CPS per worker. By standard, we exceed that. A maximum of fifteen in foster care by standard, so this could drop it below those figures, which would make us even more out of compliance. NCFAST is coming, and I just don't know what to say about that. Those of y'all who have been around for a pretty good while know NCFAST is NC slow. It's, it's currently been delayed in child welfare. And it's, we are anticipating Pitt perhaps rolling into this now in January. There are two bills in the legislature to try and slow this down even further, to try and get some better outcomes. This system is not the system you need in child welfare, but is the system the state has purchased and spent ninety million dollars thus far that they would have to pay back. Fifty percent of that would be federal money if they do not implement. So I, I understand the legislature's concerns here too. We've been in pilot mode in some of the counties for over eighteen months. So, but we have loss of productivity. What they're seeing is at least a twenty-five percent loss of productivity, and that's borne out with what we saw in food stamps and Medicaid and those other programs. The, the potential safety issues for children and, and the data's not particularly reliable at this point. Raise the Age, I know Mr. Elliott mentioned that as it relates to detention. We don't know how that's going to impact us with foster care. We do get some children through, from the juvenile courts that are in trouble with the law now. And so, but we don't typically get from them the sixteen to eighteen because they've been in adult court. There is certainly the potential that those kids could start moving into, into our system in certain situations. And, and these would be folks who don't belong at YDC, the youth development, I mean, yeah, programs. But they can't remain in their family for some reason, so that's why we sometimes get those children. They are a problem certainly to find placement for. Most foster parents are not excited to get a fourteen-year-old in their home who's been stealing or whatever. And I don't know that they'll be exciting to see a sixteen-year-old in their home who has similar kinds of problems. But, but we don't know. The Families First legislation is a federal law. It's supposed to go into effect in October. It is going, and North Carolina is not going to jump in in October. There is some potential for pushing this out. There are some pieces we might have to start doing shortly. But North Carolina is, is trying to move as, as the law allows to, to push this down the road a little bit. What I will say is that one impact is, is going to be moving the services, the, the dollars from foster care to the front end to prevention. So the goal is to reduce the number of children in foster care so you can shift those dollars to help with prevention. There are no new federal dollars attached here. One of the down things, however, is that they will not allow us to use group homes for more than two weeks for placement for any of our children. And we use group homes and, and homes like Baptist Children's Home, those kinds of folks, right off. And so for our teens especially and for our family groups, when you've got four or five siblings, you need to keep together. So that's something that we've got in, that's one of those balls that's up in the air that we're all trying to pay attention to and trying to plan for. Many of you knew about House Bill six thirty, which was the big discussion in last year's legislative session. Its enactment put several things on counties. One is the memorandum of understanding. I think all of y'all have been here for at least one minimal discussion. No, we have one person who has not been here for the discussion about memorandum of understanding. The memorandum of understanding lays out certain performance measures for us and actions that they can take if you do not meet these performance measures. It has gone through several iterations for a variety of reasons, which I won't spend time on. The MOU is between the county and the Department of Health and Human Services in Raleigh. And so the ultimate penalty, and there's a whole lot of possible options you go through before you get to the ultimate penalty. But the ultimate penalty is that the state can come in and run your program if you are not meeting the requirements and the county cost would be, would be borne. Obviously by the county, the state would not pick up any of those additional costs until you've improved sufficiently to run your own program. They've done that once thus far in the last year with the county in the West. The Social Services Work Group is also out of this same legislation. It started out and, and everybody got upset because what they were going to do was to have regional social services departments as opposed to county social services departments. They were going to reduce the number of social services departments down to thirty for the state. There were lots and lots of issues, and obviously everybody, the mental health reform jumped out in every, in everybody's mind. Lots of issues, won't talk about that. It ultimately, based on a lot of work that we did and, and the Commissioners Association did, morphed into a regional supervision by the state for counties. It didn't change the counties, it changed the state administration, which we believe is going to be wonderful, but they're going to put an is going to be wonderful, but they're going to put, and plans there, it's going to roll out over the next couple of years. But, we do think it's got some real positives from that standpoint. There were other things that came from that Social Services Work Group that may be impacting the counties. It's all got to work through the legislative process, so you'll be hearing more, but we're paying attention to all that. The Work Group is going to continue to meet, there's a bill to extend its life. The Center for Support of Families, there was a budget, or piece put in this whole House Bill 630 that said that the state had to put out a contract to have a full study of the social services program, how we work in North Carolina. And so, Center for Support of Families has gotten that grant, that bid award, and they are looking at a variety of strategies, they're doing a major study. They are beginning to put out some of their information now. There's a report due to the legislature, probably was the end of April or early this month, about some of the things that they're looking at. Most of their suggestions are going to cost money and are going to need a lot more development before they can be implemented. One of the first things that I think they probably will be able to go forward with is training for Social Services Board members as a mandated activity, and they're suggesting two times per year. They're trying to look at, like I say, a lot of other things, so there's a lot of wait and see going on. So, now, let's get to the actual budget, because those are some of the factors that are flying around out here. Our budget is about a third of a billion dollars. And if you look at our, at that dollar figure, our budget increase is about 1.7%. Obviously, the county dollars have increased more than 1.7%, but that's looking at the overall budget. You can see that, wait a minute, you've come too fast. I ain't there yet. No, I ain't there yet. See, the clicker thing. Okay, so, let me have my clicker. Okay, well, there's supposed to be. A picture.
So, it's not here yet.
I don't know why you don't have that picture. It's a picture that looks like this. Okay, well, their numbers and my numbers aren't in the same order, so let's go to the next one, then we'll back up. Let's keep going. Here we go. Where's my, there you go. Let's get to that one first and then we'll back up. See? Okay, so what do we get for running around like crazy? So, this is the budget, and this is the budget, about 33 million of it flows actually through the County General Fund, and about 12.4 million projected for this year would be the county share of all of that. So, if you look at the total monies that we're involved with, we're about 3.7% coming from the county. Again, that doesn't, that's not, that's supposed to make you feel better. So, don't know that it works, but it's supposed to make you feel better. The funds that we generate based on the work that we do here in Pitt County have a significant impact on the Pitt County economy. You know, we pay out over 10 million, or right around 10 million dollars to daycare centers. If we weren't paying those funds, those daycare centers might be struggling significantly and some might close. We pay out over $46 million through food stamps to the grocery stores in this community. Over $240 million is paid out to medical providers based on the work that we do determining Medicaid. So, those are huge, huge impacts on the economy of Pitt County. Our child support program generates nearly $15.5 million in child support payments for the children in Pitt County. And so, we believe that we are a large economic impact on the county. So, wanted to make sure that we had that discussion and that you did see what percentage was the county. All right, now, let's see if I can go back. Okay. So, looking at the drivers of this budget. 12.4 million is county. We've got in here spaces for office, increases for our needs for guardianship, adult protective services, foster care, and I know, hold your breath, 24 positions, which is an 8% increase. About 15% of our increase, as has been mentioned by everybody, is coming from the growth in the employee mandated expenses such as retirement, healthcare, et cetera. That's about $500,000. Our foster care payment growth is, accounts for about 19% and foster care is one of those things that you've got to pay, you've got no choice in it. And it's around $800,000. And that is actually, we are overspending this year, and so, this actually will cover us for next year, we believe. So, a total of 31% is found just in these two items of our budget increase. Some of the, this is tied up in the additional space request, and Mr. Elliott did comment already that he has worked something out with Trillium to provide us some space using one of those group homes for staff. So, you know, obviously, that will be cut out of the budget. It hasn't been cut out of this, but obviously, that will be cut out of the budget and buys us a little bit of time. We have left it in this discussion just because it needs to be on your radar. The staff request certainly is the biggest ask. Many of these are positions we've asked for before. And so, failure to be adequately staffed does a variety of things. It increases stress and turnover, but more importantly, it increases risk to the children and the adults that we serve and to the county when a child dies or an adult dies or is severely injured as a result of us not being out there timely or doing what we needed to do. And then, there's obviously the Medicaid error, which is a liability for you. Our foster care caseloads have increased dramatically and we pay out over $243 a month to, for foster care. Many things caused that number to be so high, but one cause was when we had lack of staff. Our foster care caseloads were growing and children were coming into care faster than we could accommodate that, and so, that meant that we couldn't work with the families and the children as well as we needed to in order to move them out the door much more quickly. So, there's a cause and effect that is seen when you aren't adequately staffed. And we want to congratulate you and thank you for giving us the full staff last year because I've got some numbers that are going to show you that's paying off. I will give that back to you. Let's get through here. In a lot of our conversations with the manager, there's been some question about, you know, how do we do with comparison counties? Why is Pitt County struggling? Why are we having all these needs, et cetera? So, we went out and looked at our comparison counties, and I used eight of them, I think that's the correct group, there could be a couple more, I don't know. But, we went out and looked at those. And so, we are trying to benchmark some against those, and so, I pulled up some data just to kind of help you get a sense of why we look different, and I'll try and run through this real fast with you. So, first and foremost, and many of you have heard this and probably are tired of hearing this, but Pitt County is the state's only metropolitan county affected by both persistent general poverty and persistent child poverty, the only one. And persistent poverty is defined as having more than 20% poverty over 30 years or more. Most recent data shows us at 21.7% with general poverty and 29.6% in child poverty. That was 2017 data. In 1960, we were sitting at around 60% poverty. So, we have made huge, huge increases in, or growth, you know, progress in that time period. And you heard Lee Guth talk the other day about the fact that 23% of Pitt County is food insecure. So, that certainly, you know, is some of the driver. And just to further down, we are one of only 48 counties in the state, in the country, that have been labeled this way, metropolitan counties. So, Pitt County's poverty certainly affects families and children. You can look at the childhood poverty in comparison counties. We are two percentage points above the North Carolina poverty average, poverty rate using a five-year average, and you see our comparison counties are all below that figure. This, opioids certainly is compounding some of our problems, and so, if you look at the opioid crisis, we certainly are at high risk there, and that has an impact on the work with families. Five of our comparison counties are also in those red marks. Family disruption, dissolution, and whatever's going on in families contributes to child abuse, child neglect, and other issues for families, and that then ultimately leads to the increase in the number of foster children in Pitt County. You can see that we had 105% increase in the number of children in foster care. None of our comparison counties have had that level of increase. Some of that growth occurred when we were having staffing problems. The vacancies meant we couldn't work as quickly with the families or locate other resources so that that child could leave care. We are not meeting the 12 months to permanence goals as set by the state and federal government. You see that rise started in 1670, which is when we had our vacancies starting to show up, and then also, that, so we weren't, we were having to juggle cases then, and then you add to that the fact that that resulted in more children staying in care longer, plus we had more coming in the door. So, last budget year, you approved the staff we needed, and so, they are now trained and we're beginning to see that payoff, and the vacancies are beginning to get filled. Looking at the first four months of this year, 34 children left care. We had 27 come in, no, 22 come into care, but 34 left care. And last year, we had, in those same four months, 13 children to leave care. So, you can see that having the caseload smaller, we're able to do better work with children and families. We had 27 children come into care in 2018, so we're reducing on the other end, too. It's going to take a while to reverse that trend of more children in care, but we are definitely making progress with the fact that we have better staffing at this point. The rate of increase in foster care has only been seen, this percentage, in Durham and Pender County as far as metropolitan counties. They're the only two that have seen more than 100% increase. And I struggle with Pender being a metropolitan county, but they're considered metropolitan because they're in the New Hanover group there, which would pull them into the metropolitan determination. Vulnerable adults, the abuse of our vulnerable adults has increased by more than twice the average rate of Pitt's comparison counties. The Silver tsunami is upon us, and so, this is going to continue to grow, not get better. And I'm just going to use one number, by 2036, 104% increase from today until then for the 75 to 84 age group. The numbers of children and younger folk are going to be slowly decreasing, not hugely, but slowly decreasing during that same time period. 40.3% of our seniors will have at least one disability and 11.1% will be below the poverty level. So, this, again, is an indicator that we are at the very tip of this now. The numbers we serve that are aged and disabled are only going to rise, abuse, neglect, exploitation is on the rise. And why? Why are we getting more reports? Part of it is we've done a better job in educating the public about what this is. But, part of it is, you know, we're much more mobile today. Self-neglect is a big thing. When your children are living four states over and grandma's here, or mama's here, they don't always know and aren't able to follow up as much, and so, you're seeing some of that reflected here. You're seeing, obviously, the mental health concerns, the substance abuse issues in the exploitation and in some of those kinds of things. But, those are just some of the drivers. If we look at our guardianships, they have increased by 70%. Half of that growth occurred between October and January, and we've had 106% increase in our guardianship caseload since 2015. Guardianship is somewhat driven by our APS caseload, mental health concerns, and the inability of families to manage extreme behaviors when there are significant mental health behaviors. VITALN here also has some impact on that because folks wind up in the hospital, they don't have anybody who can make medical decisions for them, they're not maybe able to make the medical decisions for themselves, and so, we find ourselves being appointed or being asked to seek guardianship on some folks at VITALN. VITALN is very helpful with this, they do help support some of our staff, staffing costs. So, the increase that you see here where we spiked should have been more gradual, but we spiked because we had vacancies in the APS area, so we didn't have enough staff to be out there working it timely, and so, things backed up. Once we got back to full staff, we started looking at those cases and started moving them, and so, it all happened kind of at one time. We are the only agency that can service public guardian in the state. And I would like to note also that the state puts absolutely no state dollars in APS or guardianship. They only do federal, they only move federal monies around. So, this is totally a federal, I mean, a federal and county caused. All right, our Medicaid growth, if you look at the other counties, our Medicaid growth has outpaced every county except Onslow. Medicaid is a reflection of our poverty rate. Additionally, the hospital does help us with this. They do fund some positions so that we can get applications processed because that's going to mean that they're going to get paid if we can get that Medicaid for them. So, they pay the non-federal share for at least five positions, and the School of Medicine pays the non-federal share for two Medicaid positions. This gets folks in the door processed faster. It does not, they do not pay for that review that's due six months to 12 months down the road. So, we are getting some support there. Our food and nutrition cases remain fairly steady. You see, we had a drop, and then we started going back up, and it's a minimal growth. We're going to be interested to see how this goes as long as unemployment remains low and folks are working. We should continue to see that drop again. But, you see that Pitt, and the only other county that had an increase was Onslow, and we are pretty certain that had to do with the hurricane and the fact that lots of folks got put on food stamps at that point through the disaster and have remained on food stamps because they found out they could qualify. So, critical space needs. I'm just going to hit this just to say, we need space. We're continuing to look, we have got to ultimately address this issue, and the best plan would be, obviously, to reconfigure the Human Services Center and perhaps add to that Human Services Center. It's in your capital budget, but it's in your capital budget sometime out. We currently are in two buildings. We deal with a lot of confidential information, yet we have two and three staff in some offices, which is not good. None of the buildings that we are in were designed for the kind of work we do. We have wasted space in there, but you can't reconfigure. And I don't need to be out there trying to reconfigure and spending money on reconfiguring when a year or two down the road, y'all might be able to help us out. So, we've put up walls, we bought freestanding partitions, but I'm not able to, I'm not going to do that anymore because I feel like it's just wasting money. You know, we get about 48% through the depreciation as reimbursement through the depreciation schedule. And if you want to see more about this, we have talking points in your package, and so, page one has that. And this was just some of our options that we were generating as we begin to talk about this. Moving right along to the Adult Services and Foster Care. The first three items on this list do get some federal reimbursement, so don't believe this is all county money. We're doing a variety of things to move children out of foster care in Pitt County, but we've got to find better ways to address safety to hopefully reduce the number of children coming into care. If I can stop them coming in the front door, then we have done a great thing. So, we believe that investment in signs of safety will help us with that. This is an initial down payment. We've applied for grants to do this with, we haven't heard on any of that. We have got to do something to start this. This will help our staff. We feel like we could pay for additional installments on this if we don't get any grant monies, but the savings in foster care cost could be shifted in this direction to continue to fund this. We believe that, you know, let me back up. This is a really promising practice, it's used internationally, and it's one that Wilson County has probably been involved with, I believe, in about seven years. They only have about 35 children in foster care last time I heard. Now, granted, that county is smaller, but that is a significant difference in the way those numbers are playing out. We also have a work group going on in the county that is working on developing a prevention plan for Pitt County. So, we're trying to approach it at the front end, and this budget would help us with some of that. We've talked about foster care payments, I'm not going to belabor that anymore. We do have, we do provide foster care for our 18 to 21-year-old population if they sign an agreement with us, and that's for children, young people, they're not children anymore, young people who are going to college or who are starting their first job, those kinds of things. And you and I do that for our own children. We give them a little bit of money to help with that car payment or that first apartment or those school books or whatever that they need when they can't get it from somewhere else. So, we do this, we have a very successful program. We average about 16 to 18 young adults monthly that we're working with on this, and this is driving the cost up because we do have a very successful program with large numbers of children. And again, the payoff in the long run is going to be great if these folks can get this education that they need and get started on the right foot. And the last thing is our unmet needs for adult clients, and there is no reimbursement, this is all county money. This is for our APS and wards. When we need to keep people safe and they lack the financial resources, it puts us in a situation, since we have responsibility for them at that point, to obligate funds for the county, from the county to help them be safe. Generally, it's a short-term commitment of funds. It would happen perhaps when they've applied for the financial assistance, but the facility won't take them without some initial upfront money, so this ties them over till that gets approved. It might be somebody who's over the income limits for certain programs and they might need a medication that they don't qualify for Medicaid, might mean that they need some Might mean that they need some additional services that they can't get from somewhere else. So, it's a safety issue and we are, for our, for our wards, we, we, we assume some pretty big responsibility just because they're our wards. So, if you wanna look at this further, we've got some talking points in your package that's on pages two and three. The, the folks that I'm guardian for, these are the folks that the court appoints me to be guardian. I've got about a hundred and sixty or so on any given day. They come to me from Cherry Hospital. They come to me from all over the place. But a lot of them come from our APS caseload, our Adult Protective Services caseload, because we find that folks are not competent to, to, to make those decisions for themselves as we do that Adult Protective Service evaluation. It sometimes comes to us from family members who are, are arguing over who needs to do what and the clerk of court decides that we might be the best person to, to manage that, that family's, or that, that client's needs. So, so we, we get into this in a variety of ways. I think, I believe I have someone who could not stand trial for murder because he could not meet the competency levels. We have someone with some other charges that are pretty significant and they couldn't meet the competency levels. And so, Cherry Hospital has given them to us and they will ultimately be discharged from Cherry. So, so, you know, we, we have a significant number of those folks. It is, it's a big number and it has grown by leaps and bounds. And, and more and more of them are having mental health issues. And it's not grandma who's eighty years old, who has dementia, is sitting in the nursing home and needs somebody to make decisions for. We're talking, we have folks from the point they turn eighteen and we will have them unless they can get reestablished and don't need a guardian any longer. We could have them till they die. And so, we're making decisions for guardians that we've never had to make. Decisions about family planning, decisions about, you know, marriage, decisions about, I mean, 'cause folks have rights, those don't go away. We have to make decisions as we go along. The bulk of our decisions are around medical issues, life decisions. But, but we can have some interesting discussions on any given day. And we're finding with our younger folks, we're coming into conflict with the fact that frequently we're taking children that they have, which gets us in conflict legally because I've got custody of the children and I'm also responsible for the parent. And so, those cases have to be negotiated with other counties to, to reduce that conflict. So, a lot going on there. Well, you know, used, yeah, kind of, kind of, I mean, yeah, we'll keep going, we'll keep going. Kind of, yeah, yeah. There used to be three of us, but now there's only one of us left. Okay, so, the, the positions. We're gonna start with our Economic Support Services staff. And I wanna say that the manager did approve two IMC twos in his recommendation. Income maintenance caseworker, two positions. And these are the folks who do those Medicaid reviews, who look at reports, who, who do those applications. That's what this group does. Hopefully, to lessen our liability because right now our folks carry about twelve thousand, twelve-hundred cases apiece, which is huge. So, let's talk about what's happened. That, that lovely bill back there that gave us the, the payback piece also gave us a whole lot more reports that we need to work and, and were being generated because they wanna make sure that folks who get Medicaid are eligible for Medicaid. And so, there's a lot more electronic availability of information. So, we're working twenty or more reports on any given day. We have one report that has a five-day turnaround that we have to address. Working that, those reports are critical. And, and in fact, working those reports have been helpful. We've, we've identified over three hundred referrals to our Program Integrity section for, because of overpayments. And some of them could have been inadvertent, but, but because of overpayments. The staff have to then verify all the information that's on these reports. And because we've got these reports, we're held liable for not reacting to these reports. So, it's, we're, the cost to the county for this, personnel cost only, would be about twelve thousand dollars per position. And, and so, and that would be for all of the income maintenance, two positions. We're asking for the supervisor in Program Integrity because Program Integrity is growing because of all these reports in part, but also because Program Integrity has gone into NC FAST. Program Integrity needs a lot more support, oversight. There are clear expectations in the memorandum of understanding around Program Integrity. So, having a full-time supervisor as opposed to the program manager who supervises about fourteen or fifteen different people with different responsibilities, having that full-time position would certainly help us improve our quality, maintain our statistics, do better tracking, enhance the number of prosecutions that we do. This is for programs that would be involved in this. The program manager, as I said, has, I've already mentioned that. The cost for this position is twenty thousand dollars in county money. The IMC twos, this is to handle that Medicaid growth that we noted earlier. This is the review section. And, and, and the Cohen ca, of the, the Hawkins case is gonna, is, is an impact. We are working a lot of overtime just trying to get these cases reviewed on a timely basis. Staff are worn out. There's also, you know, we, we have to hold folks accountable for ninety-seven percent quality. Again, we're being held accountable at a hundred cent, hundred percent by the state, but ninety-seven percent by the federal government. So, folks are gonna make mistakes, people, but we're holding them in a ninety-seven percent quality and that's a pretty big quality standard. They have to process things timely. There's no op, option, you know, no, no way to do otherwise. So, we are estimating, again, that we need four positions for this, spread across our Medicaid review section. Two income maintenance caseworker threes to supplement our trainer who focuses, the trainer focuses primarily on new staff coming in the door and major policy changes that everybody needs to get trained on. You have folks who come in and Medicaid is a hard program. There are twenty-two, twenty-three different pots you can reach into and you have to determine eligibility for each of those pots before you can determine ineligible. So, folks sometimes struggle with all the policy. And so, having somebody one-on-one who could work with folks might help us reduce our turnover and it also might help us improve or at least continue with our good error rate at this point. And that's about fourteen thousand dollars per position. And then with Medicaid transformation coming, we know we're gonna have significant numbers of phone calls, people coming in. We need folks here who can spend time with our, our, they're gonna be called beneficiaries now instead of clients, with our beneficiaries. And, and so, if we can do that in our customer care section as opposed to having them have to go talk to a, an income maintenance caseworker who's busy processing cases, we could, in fact, save us some time. So, we're asking for that position. That would be about eleven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars in county money. And the talking points there would be on pages four and five of that document if you wanna look at that. So, now, moving into child welfare. We have, are asking for six new positions. One is to split our child welfare section into two sections. One is, and, and add a program manager position for foster care. Again, you've seen that foster care is significant. The county cost here would be about forty percent and I'll get into that. Foster care is now called permanency planning. It's no longer the foster care unit, it's the permanency planning unit, but anyway. The, we have the new integrated manual and other requirements being imposed that are making this really, across the board, too complex for one person to try and manage all of those programs. We have three distinct areas we work in. This, the current position supervises ten social supervisors, two clerks, a data evaluator, a licensed clinical social worker, and also helps cover our interns and like the health department, we need interns. So, the foster care area or the permanency planning area licenses homes, trains foster parents, does adoptions, does the eighteen-to-twenty-one program, handles placements, work with parents to reduce issues so they can go home, all of those kinds of things. And so, we've got indicators in the MOU, we've got federal indicators we have to meet. But the most important thing is we need the best we can for our children. That's the critical piece, is, is helping children succeed and get where they need to be. So, if we can split this out, it would allow the current manager to focus on child protective services and the new position would focus on the foster care program and they would have to work jointly together. And, and, and you need to remember that child protective services is a biggie because if we make a mistake there, you have a potential death or severe injury, which, again, bad for child but increases liability for the county. The county cost for this would be about thirty-two thousand dollars for personnel. We're asking for an interpreter and, and, you know, if I have to write, rank positions, this would be one of my big ones. We have only two interpreters for the entire agency. Those two interpreters are trying to serve all two hundred and eighty-some folks that we have on staff as they have the need. We are seeing more and more work with our families in Child Protective Services who are Hispanic and need an interpreter. This past year, we served a hundred and three Hispanic families in child welfare. Because of the confidential nature, it has to be a county employee, needs to be a county employee when you're talking about child welfare issues. And, and this is not a one-and-done, go out one time, meet with the family and we're done. This is like, you're gonna be working with his family over three, six, nine months or a year. So, there are many visits this interpreter's gonna have to go on. This means on-call work, it means work out in the field. This past year, we have spent a lot of time doing that and we have had to increase our overtime for these folks. Whenever one interpreter is out, this leaves one person at the Human Services Center to handle the walk-in traffic. That's not really doable. But then even worse, if one of our interpreters is out sick and one had a vacation scheduled, then we've got nobody. So, we, we truly do need this additional position. We need someone assigned full-time to the county office building who could back up the folks at the Human Services Center. County cost for this would be about twelve thousand dollars. The social worker three for foster care in here is to help us offset the, the reduction in, in timeliness, the loss of productivity, which is being projected. And if we really staffed for that twenty-five percent loss of productivity, we'd be talking about ten or twelve staff. I'm just trying to get us a little extra help here for that loss of productivity to kinda, kinda help soften that. That's about a thirty-two thousand, five hundred county cost. We need an investigation assessment and treatment person, which is our CPS side of the house. And then, again, is because of the NC FAST piece, so I won't spend much time on that. The county cost would be twenty-four thousand, a hundred and fifty dollars. And again, these are the personnel costs. The manager did approve a staff development position to focus on the NC FAST training and troubleshooting, so we thank you for that. We saw that it would be critical during implementation. We saw that in the other programs as they implemented, especially food stamps and Medicaid, having someone who could do that kind of thing and we didn't have that initially. And I think that's part of what drove some of the, the problems Pitt County had. The folks that we have doing this currently at the Human Services Center already are trying to support two hundred people, thereabouts. I don't know if they could add this additional group of about fifty to sixty people. And in addition, they need to be able to understand the law and policies that relates to child welfare and how that integrates with the system. And so, this really does need to be a new position and the cost would be about twenty-one thousand dollars for this. A social worker two to help facilitate the foster care transition. As children come into foster care, we need to have meetings with families, with the, the foster parents. We need to determine things like the eligibility sides of, of whether they qualify for which programs because we have different funding streams for foster care, all of that kinda piece. We have one social worker now doing this. She's carrying a full caseload in addition to trying to do this. We need to speed this process up. And so, we are projecting this position would cost us twenty-one thousand dollars in county money. Potentially could save us money if we can do our determinations faster because we might could use a higher rate of reimbursement quicker for the, for the foster care portion of it. Adult services, and this is, this is a critical, critical, critical area for us. We, the growth is dynamic here. There were no recommendations in this area. And, and I, and potentially because, as you see, there's, there's not much money, it's fifty percent reimbursed. In APS, we may get a report that the person's being neglected and find folks living in filth with severe hygiene issues. We have had folks with bed sores where you could see the bone. We have had elderly dementia, dementia patients who are living alone or being left alone by their family. There are those that exploit and convert, convert funds to their own use. Some of our folks need placement to be safe. Sometimes we can put, put services in place to support the family. We get into freezing bank accounts, for example, or taking other actions. We saw twenty percent growth just last year in the APS referrals. We've had four staff in two thousand twelve. Today, we have five staff and that's because we transitioned someone from another position to help cover this without adding additional staff. The maximum caseload size should be fifteen and on even, any given day, our staff could have far more than that in various stages of the process. Dropping the ball in this area can be significant if you don't do what you need to do in an APS case because, again, you're dealing with very fragile individuals who could have potential problems that could result in death or, or severe injury. Yes, yes, for social worker. So, we are way excessive there on any given day. Okay. And, and when we are short-staffed, it was even worse. Our guardianship, we had, the supervisors were doing APS during that period of time. We were in such bad shape. Our guardianship caseload, as you've seen, is going through the roof. That should be a one-to-twenty-five or one-to-thirty ratio and these ratios are your maximum that you should be carrying. Twenty-five would be for those that have mental health issues. Thirty would be the, the, the older folks who don't, don't need, need as much support. We have four staff trying to manage this in the agency. One of my staff came to me Tuesday, and this was interesting that it happened on Tuesday, to talk about a case. He has a nineteen-year-old with some behavior problems who is in a group home. This young man has gotten a job and we want to support him moving forward and being as successful as he can be. And, but there are a lot of moving parts. And the worker was wanting to do all the right things and was trying to talk to me to talk through this to try and figure out how to make this happen. But he's got over forty cases that need intensive service. They are mental health cases, this young man being one of those. And so, he can't provide the level of services he feels this child needs, this young man needs. And so, he was frustrated as he was coming to me trying to process and figure out how to help this young man and look at how we could reach out to, to support this young man. A guardianship position and our APS positions would cost you about thirty-two thousand in county money from a, a county cost for personnel. So, I say, though, we've got to do something here. We've not helped these folks in years increase the level of staff support. And remember, these folks also operate your special needs shelter during the hurricanes. Our social worker two that we're asking for would provide in-home services to individuals who need a little extra support but maybe don't quite rise to the level of guardianship or a higher level of service. And, and if we could put some folks there, it might allow us to do more with less. That position would be about twenty-one thousand. We're also asking for a supervisor just to come into compliance with the one-to-five ratio and that would cost thirty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Now, we're also asking for new staff in child support and legal services. And the child support agent was approved by the manager, so I'm gonna, again, thank him for that because this really allows us to focus on better collections for our child, for our foster care children, which could reduce the county's cost ultimately. If they get caught up in the other caseloads, we're finding, because our caseloads are so large, they tend to fall to the bottom of the group to be worked. And so, having this will, will be very helpful and, and could ultimately save the county money. The cost here is, is thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars, so it was, it was a low-cost position. We're getting desperate for an attorney in child welfare, just desperate. Between child welfare and APS or adult, adult services work, we are at the point we really need two full-time CPS attorneys and one full-time APS attorney or adult services attorney. I call it APS, but it also does guardianship. With over two hundred children in care with many legal deadlines, plus they consult and file on CPS cases, we have petitions, a communication hearings, dispositional hearings, mandatory reviews, permanency planning hearings. Failure to be timely can impact our funding because it's tied to us moving cases through the court service in a court system in a timely manner. But more importantly, again, it impacts a child. We have filed, we, if we file a termination of parental rights, a TPR, and we win, there is now an automatic appeal to the State Supreme Court. That has not been in place before, an automatic appeal. We have filed twenty TPRs since June. Those have not all gone through the system. Most of them have been worked prior to this law change. I signed one yesterday. So, TPRs are gonna, and that, you, you want to move children into permanent placements. And so, if it's terminating the parents' rights, then that is what we need to be doing. So, there's gonna be a huge cost potentially with that. We spent twenty-four thousand dollars in appeals work last year and that was only probably four or five cases in a variety of different areas, not just child welfare. And we contract that out because we don't have the staff to do the appeals work ourself. We had two cases last year that took us ten days in trial and, and that tied up two attorneys during that process. And that is not common, but it is not out of, out of the realm of possibility. We just had an adult caseload, petition that took us three days in trial. We just had an adult case, petition that took us three days in trial. The standard workload according to Bar Association and according to the state should be sixty in child welfare with over two hundred children in care, just that piece of it. We are certainly far exceeding that caseload standard. We wanted the second attorney to handle the appeals so that we would not be contracting out appeals anymore and any overflow that occurred in, in our, in our systems. The cost for this would be about forty-six thousand dollars in county money. And if we don't do this, then we're going to have to need, need to add some money back into our contract line item to cover this additional appeals cost we're going to be seeing. The paralegal for child support can help us increase our collections greatly in child support. This, this is a, a fast-moving operation and a large operation. We have three point five paralegals for the entire agency. One of those is in child welfare and adult services, but she does back up the child support folks. The paralegals can improve collections by getting more motions filed, referrals done, all of that kind of legwork for the attorneys. In the first four months of this year, we had got three thousand five hundred and forty-seven cases under order. We could increase that with, with that. We had, in the most recent year, we established eighteen hundred and twenty-eight cases in the establishment area. There's a lot more that paralegals do, but, but clearly we are, when, when our attorney talks, she says it's, it's like a production line. They are just moving all the time, and they could do so much more with a little more help. So, and that increased collections means more money for parents, but it also means increased incentives because every dollar we collect, there is some incentive to come back to the county if we meet our, our responsibilities and our goals in child, child support. The, the actual match cost is fourteen-four for this position. So, did I make it in less than an hour? Yeah, I think I did. Anyway. I didn't fall off the one. Y'all need to know I'm standing on a law book back here so you can see me. So that ball actually was out there. I'm kind of balancing. So anyway, so, questions. I have two hundred eighty-three point five positions.
Okay, how many of them are, how many positions do you have that are not filled?
Today, we have twelve. We average anywhere from twelve to, it runs somewhere between twelve and twenty on any given day. They're budgeted.
Yeah, they're in the budget.
They're in the budget. They are, you know.
Are you subject to the thirty-day freeze?
The manager has, has done a little bit to help us there, and it's based on some of the conversations we've all had over the last couple of years. Our freeze, as I understand it at this point, is the county portion is what we're being frozen for, so that that, that county percentage gets returned. I can't remember if I'm getting the thirty days or not.
We're trying to. The cases with CPS, Child Protective Services, APS, Adult Protective Services, if you make the case.
I have to make the case, and I do frequently make the case. Sometimes I win, sometimes I don't.
If they're grant-funded positions, there's no freeze. If there's grant-funded, it's hundred percent money.
But I don't have a hundred percent positions generally. Yeah, yeah.
Was that two eighty and a half, do you want, what was it, twenty-four?
Twenty-four. I realize, you know, I'm asking for what I need. I realize that is not what I will get, but yes, sir.
Okay, I don't have any further questions.
Commissioner Colson asked my question, and I guess what I would like is to just ask maybe the county managers to, or maybe your department to provide an HR breakdown about where these positions are currently. Twenty-four is a big ask, and what I'd like to see is that we're in-house, doing everything we can to be the most productive before we're, we're going to fund that many additional positions, just to some, make sure that we're doing the housekeeping thing, so.
This is Elliot. I'm the board member representing the social service. I want to first say to you and your entire staff, having been with the board and going to all these meetings, to say that you are to be committed. I want you to know that. But at the same time, I would like for the board to know that even though the state law came into effect by this senator who is no law to drive it, and I'm not calling name, I screw up y'all's name, so I'm not going to call any names. We had a meeting in the county, we went to these meetings that were provided, I have, with the NCAA, North Carolina Association, Association of County Commissioners, and the meetings for DSS ones, so we, all of us know about, you know, the one with the DSS. And in the one that I went with DSS, I'm, I'm just sharing some information, the training that we had, and we met with the, the bill maker of the one that's changing the entire landscape or culture, am I right, Mrs. of DSS. We have fought to not to have the senator, I supported that in a very strong way. But also at that meeting, that senator who, not senator, whatever she was, that legislator who provided that, got that bill through, could not answer the questions. All the commissioners was in this room that day as a separate little side for DSS, couldn't answer the question, what data she used to make all these changes? It was a personal why. And the commissioner was upset because the counties are having to fund the things that they set down. So it was a rather radical meeting. And to find out that there is no data, am I right, or has it been done?
The, the data, and that's part of why the MOU is still being dealt with in a, in a variety of different ways. The data is still not reliable data in a lot of areas. And, and, and so, yes, you're.
And so, so this is why the board, the commissioners won that fight to support DSS by not having these super centers. And because they could not answer how the county residents were going to fare either. But with all the meetings in NCA and North Carolina Association of County Commissioners and DSS, there is so much unknown about these changes, it's like going to school in kindergarten with no basis, and they don't even know what they, the mama is making them leave home and, and, and sending them out there in the world with a bunch of unknowns. So it, it is a highly concern that we take, but, and I don't envy all of this, but it's already passed, and she's got to address it. Now, as far as all the positions, I don't know what to say about how to meet it, but this staff is really to be committed, you all, because they are really working hand on fist to meet the citizen needs. And I appreciate Mrs. Elliot's comment about health services needs. I don't know how we're going to do everything we need to do. My education was not in social service. My education was in information programs. So what, I don't know how she's going to do it, and I don't know, y'all been on the board long as I have. And Mr. Elliot has been very supportive for this. So I, I, I want to say that we, and I don't think any of it is unnecessary, but they can't answer the question when you ask the question that relates to funds and social services. They have no answers, even the social service who was there and whatever. So the commiss, commissioner got a, but it didn't solve the issue that she has to face it. So all I wanted to say was to say thank you. That's all I wanted to say. And I attended all of the, the meetings, all of the regional meetings that you all appointed me to. And I've educated myself beyond the fact that they don't even know who made the law to answer the questions. And I just want you to know that. They can't answer the questions. She can ask the question, and they can't answer her questions. And the bugs, the worms, the bullfrogs, and the goats will not get answered to some of her questions that she must face, or we're going to pay the price. That's the point I want you to know in this. And when I said paying the price, you got, them jokers got to find the money. Thank y'all. Thank y'all, thank you. Y'all, y'all thought I was going to say something, didn't you? Thank you.
Didn't you? I must have missed something.
Thank you.
Mr. McGowan.
Thank you, thank you. The NC fast, and you mentioned it earlier, that has been a tremendous challenge throughout my, being a commissioner. I thought that problem was solved.
That's a big joke.
Now, let me ask, what, what, what seems to be the difficulty in, in, in dealing with that? Because I understand, if I can remember correctly, there was some, we got this NC fast from some other state, and, and, and they were doing pretty good, as I, as I understand. So explain that to me, and then what are we doing to, doing to deal with that, the organ, your organization, your statewide organization, what, what are they doing to?
We've written letters. But let me start first. This, this is a Coram project, a product which is from IBM. It was decided upon probably ten, twelve years ago. They began to, you know, doing the work that needed to be done on it. There are prob, there may be one state that's using this, I think Canada. There, there are a couple of folks, a couple of places that it's been used, and I understand at least one of the places that has been using this has sued because it is not doing what it needs to do. I think that's in Ottawa maybe or somewhere. It's, it's, it was probably for a, a, the state who was using a green screen system that was built in the seventies, this looked slick and good, okay? And so they started some years back putting it together. Well, technology has moved now way far beyond where that is. So, so that's one of the problems. I, I, I don't, I can't tell you why we have, for child welfare, there's over three hundred sheets that you have to look, job aids that you have to look at to figure out how to operate the system. We have similar kinds of situations in our economic services. The last couple of days, I've been seeing red screens come up that says, "We apologize for the slowness of the operation of our system." And that's in our food stamp and Medicaid area where folks are trying to push cases in, and it's taken a long time to get, get anything in because it's, it. The other day, I called about a client to find out some information, and I got the worker to pull it up in the food stamp system. And we sat there and had a long conversation before it finally came up because it was one of those days it was operating slowly. We are still doing system workarounds, and we have to save every piece of paper that says, tells us what system workaround we're doing, when we were doing it, and, and what the exception that we're doing, the, that they're, they're making us do in order to make it the system process. Because when we get audited, we're not necessarily following the rules that exist, so we have to be able to produce the fact that this was the rule in place when we did this. We are getting extra things we have to work because the system is, because it's a, a system that goes across the entire agency and then across the entire state. If I change the address in one place, it goes across over here and, and, which is a good thing. But at the same time, sometimes those addresses don't match up at the end, and we had people's food stamp benefits that didn't go out because the address got changed. And then the counties have to step back and re-address every one of these and put something in. And, and there were probably five thousand cases across the state that got impacted by this. I mean, it's a constant work to fix what this system does. Why, I don't know. You know, I, I, that's above my pay grade to understand that, but I know there are issues. I do know that the social services working group that Ms. Perkins Williams was talking about, one of the recommendations that came out of there as it relates to child welfare and adult services, and, and perhaps a bigger area, was to say, "We really need to reexamine the use of this system." And in fact, there are two bills in the legislature as we speak to slow that process down for child welfare. We were supposed to start, go live in September. They've now pushed it probably to January. But you, it's not even up twenty-four, seven. And if you're in child welfare, you've got to have access to a system twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. They have to shut the system down at about eight o'clock at night to do the batch processes that have to be run in order to get benefits generated and, and all those changes done. So from eight o'clock until five o'clock in the morning, you don't have access to this system. So that's one of the things that we as an association have said, until you can fix some of these things, we're not bringing anybody else in here. We're through, we're done. And so the legislature's heard us, and that's why we're having this study done now, or this slowdown now so that they can in fact study this. We believe that for child welfare, this is not the system, it is not a system, it's a click, click, click kind of system. It is, you can't use it out in the field, well, child welfare's out in the field. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's a mess. Now, I will say in economic services, it has improved. I used to have fifty, sixty, seventy help, help desk tickets a day. We don't have that many, but when we have one now, it's a bad one because we had one recently that the person didn't get their benefits for four months because of that help desk ticket.
Have you discovered what, what type of economic impact it's, it's having on social services? I mean, you know, it sounds to me that this is a.
Well, you know, again, we're, we're seeing at least a twenty-five percent productivity loss, which is why some of these positions are needed. And, and, and it's causing more phone calls. You know, we're having to do more with, with folks who aren't getting what they need when they need it. In, in, in child daycare, which was the most recent program we brought in, we're having to work reports, overpayment, underpayment reports that are, what, thirty pages long? And, and you have to work those on a regular basis to get those correct. I mean, it's, it's having an economic impact on the agency.
That alone would save twenty-five positions if this was working.
Well, I don't know that it'd go that far. But, but if it was working properly, it would certainly help.
We're sort of behind time a little bit, but the manager has something.
If I could just make three brief comments on Jan's presentation, great presentation, first of all.
Yes, it was.
Both DSS and health.
Thank you very much.
But just to reiterate her point on page four of the slide talking about the persistent poverty, both general poverty and child poverty, that drives a lot of the budgetary needs and demands in human services, i.e. health, public health. And second thing being, of all the positions she asked for, the twenty-four positions, we only recommended a small handful. I asked staff, let me say on the positions, her positions are the most cost-effective because they're cost shared between state, federal, local dollars. They're normally either seventy-five percent federal, twenty-five percent county, or sometimes they're fifty-fifty, sometimes they're sixty-six and two-thirds.
It's all over the place.
Yeah, normally we just say fifty-fifty on average. But I asked them, I said, "If we were to fully fund the remainder of the positions that are not recommended, roughly how much are we talking about?" And they're saying a back-of-the-envelope estimate right here would be about a half a million dollars, so a little less than half a penny on the tax rate. But even if we said, "Hey, that's, that's the best investment based upon the case that's been sold here," even without these positions, we have space needs that are just out the wazoo in terms of how we're, what we're trying to address. So if we funded all these positions, we'd even be more behind the eight ball trying to figure out where to put them. I'm not trying to argue not to consider additional positions, but trying to paint the whole picture, so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Right, we, we are exploring that for our economic services folks there, or it's probably a small percentage that might could work from home. But that means you've got to have well-trained, self-motivated staff, and we've had probably fifty to seventy-five percent turnover in that area in the, in the last couple of years just because of the stress level, et cetera. So I don't, but, and, and there's some logistics to work out with, but, but I think it's more doable today. We tried it with about three or four positions initially, and, and what I call the care and feeding got to be more of a problem than what we were getting out of it, but it worked. So I think today, we're in a much better situation from the standpoint of all the support that they would need, that it might not be quite so difficult. So that's certainly something we want to look at over the next year to try and start moving some of those positions home. We do.
We do occasionally have a temp that we use, a retiree that helps us during the Affordable Care Act, and she does do the bulk of her work from home. She doesn't come in much at all.
Thank you. Again. Um, Mr., Schmid, oh, I'm sorry, Mary, excuse me.
Before Ms. Elliott leaves, I want to say, and we've talked about interns and all like this, I want to thank Pitt Community College for providing the class to teach us the NC FAS. So the, the community is coming out. And then I want to thank ECU and the School of Social Work for supportive means and, and that sort of thing. But for the most part, I said to our Director of Social Services, because I'm familiar with all the many facets this community need to get prepared, I asked her, when she wrote out a plan, to share with the community the fact that social services is a different and new culture so that we, you know, that they won't be panicking, but they need to pay attention to everything about social services from now on, or public health, social service, and all that gamut of human services. Thank you.
And attention to what the state is sending down here.
Yes, yes.
Welcome. We're looking forward to your presentation.
Can I get the book back? I'm gonna be taller. Yeah, I wanna, yeah, that's all right. So, yeah, thank you. I know you guys have had a lot of presentations. I'll try to keep mine as brief as possible. Um, I'm Andrew Schmidt. I'm the Director of the, our Convention and Visitors Bureau that represents Greenville and Pitt County. And for the new folks that are on the commission, while I'm here is, we are a city and county, um, organization. We represent both the city and the county. We market both the city and the county. And even though we're funded through the hotel motel tax, which means we don't get any money from that, the general fund from the county, um, because the county collects that tax and distributes it to the city and the city funds it through, uh, our office, we wanna make sure that this, uh, body knows exactly, you know, it's still public money, it's hotel motel tax money, people from out of town pay into that fund, uh, but it's still public money. And because we represent the county, we wanna make sure that, that you know what we're doing and what our, our funds are being spent on. So, um, just wanted to take a few minutes and, and kinda giving you some updates on what we're doing and what we're seeing for the next fiscal year. Um, as a reminder, why we're here is, uh, we want to attract people to come and spend their money in Greenville and Pitt County. That's what we're here for. And when they come, our mission is to make sure that they have a positive, positive experience while they're here. Um, if we can do that, we have a, a staff of seven, um, which is, is a smaller staff for a city our size, uh, but if we can get people to post on social media and on their Facebook and take Instagram pictures and talk about their positive experience, all of a sudden, our staff of seven becomes a staff of thousands. Uh, so we wanna make sure that those experiences are positive, whether they come for a convention or meeting, whether it's a family reunion, whether it's a sporting tournament or leisure travel, um, we wanna make sure that our infrastructure is up to snuff. So here's a little bit about our goals. Um, we will create a marketing plan for 2019, 2020 off of these goals, but these are goals that, um, were determined through our, um, annual retreat that we do with our staff and our board. Um, so the first goal is to increase convention sales. That will always be there, um, because we have a convention center and, and several hotels within that campus and, uh, also, you know, twenty other hotels that, that we need, wanna fill up. So bringing conventions and meetings in, statewide conferences, like the Association of County Commissioners, which I saw Jason King last week and I was like, "Hey." And I thought, "Well, maybe I oughta ask the county if they wanna host it again first." So I stopped. Um, but, uh, you know, so you're familiar with those types of conferences that come to, to Greenville. And we wanna accomplish our two goals with that. The micro-goal is the big goal, and that's to create economic impact. The more people spend money here, the more point-of-sale tax we get, and, and that's important. Uh, but the macro-goal is to expose people to Pitt County because what's happening in Pitt County is extraordinary right now. We are growing, um, we are evolving, and so when we can bring a thousand people that have never been here before for the first time, um, that is a big thing for us, and that's, that's a marketing tool. So that's one. Second is to grow the number of sports tournaments, uh, per year, and also try to increase the number of facilities that we have to use for sports tournaments. Um, that's a, a big market for us, and we have a tournament here almost every weekend. And if it's not a sporting tournament, it's an academic tournament like, um, robotics or Odyssey the Mine that was here, uh, several weeks ago. Um, promote Greenville and Pitt County as an arts and entertainment destination while also trying to increase our arts infrastructure. That's a big one for us right now. We wanna make Greenville a well-rounded destination, okay? And so we've got a lot of pieces in place, but we wanna make sure that cultural and arts opportunities are very, very important. They also help you differentiate yourself from your competition. You have to remember, for a group like our organization, we're competing against other cities to bring people here. People only have a certain amount of discretionary income that they can spend, and so they can choose on what city they wanna go spend that in, what county they wanna go spend that in. So places like Asheville and Charlotte, Greensboro, Winston-Salem, Pinehurst, Hickory, Fayetteville, Wilmington, you can go on and on. Those, those are our competitive cities. And so we wanna make sure that we have really cool, different cultural things for people to do. We had our, our Tourism Week luncheon on Monday, and we honored Todd Edwards, who is with, uh, the Farmville Group. And one of the reasons we honored him is because he helped us with that mission of differentiation. The glass-blowing studio is doing remarkably well in Farmville, and people are coming from all over to watch how people make glass, and then they can go buy it. Um, so that's a different experience. So we wanna make sure that we're, we're working to increase our arts and entertainment and cultural. Um, activating the Town Common in the Tar River, one of the things that we're trying to work with wildlife on is getting more access to the Tar River upstream so people can go to Faulkland and other places and put in, and then paddle all the way down Pitt County. And that, that's an important thing for us. And then also diversity is important for us. So we're working to launch an African-American cultural trail, and you may have heard a little bit about that. We've got committees meeting right now using the Sycamore Hill Gateway as a launching point. So we have, um, a way to tell the, the history of the contributions of the African-American community, and so that's a, a thing that will help with diversity, it will help with , uh, cultural aspects of our community, but it's also an economic development project, in my opinion, too, because we'll have people that will come from all over and, and take this trail. So we're excited about that. So those are some of our goals that we're looking at with our 2019, 2020 budget. Um, I always like to, to give you an idea of where we've been and where we're, where we are. And so this, uh, graph just kinda shows you from 2013 to 2017, the increase in tourism-related expenditures in Pitt County. So just five years ago, we were at two-hundred-and-six million in expenditures, and last year, we were at two-hundred-and-forty-six point five. That's a good increase. Um, and that's important for our county because those people spend money and then they generate point-of-sale tax. Twelve point eight million dollars went back to the state, and then five point five returned to our local, um, offices. So, uh, that's important. We wanna continue to see that number go up. And I think the thing that I'm most proud of for 2017 is, out of all the hundred counties, we had the fourth highest increase, um, from year to year. So that really tells us that we're, we're making some progress and we're doing the right things. Uh, we are governed by a board, and again, the reason that we're here, um, with the budget process is because a lot of our board members are from the county. So our county, um, provides two out of the four hotel owner-operators, they have to be county residents. Out of the hospitality-related position, one has to be a county resident. The four citizens just have, that have a basic interest in what we do and they wanna participate, two of those four have to be county citizens. And we have a city liaison and accounting liaison, and Chris, you're our, our county liaison, and I wanna thank him for his work over the, the past year. He's been very active with us, coming to board meetings and, um, suffering through our board retreat. But, uh, so thank you, Chris, for, for your involvement. And then we are, uh, we also have a city finance officer. Through the inter-local agreement, um, the city actually provides the finance officer for, and, and kinda works with us in, in our budgeting process. Four-step budgeting process. Our executive committee has looked at this budget before you, they've approved it, our full board has approved it, and, uh, now you guys are looking at it, and we'll go to the city, I think, on the twentieth of May to, to look at it as well. So it's not an easy process. It does have, have four steps that we have to go through, and, uh, and that's important because there's a lot of transparency in our budget that way. Uh, we are funded through the hotel motel tax, so if you're familiar with the, the six percent tax that is levied on all folks that come in to stay in our hotels, we also receive that money from Airbnbs. There's currently a hundred-and-eighty-nine Airbnbs in Pitt County right now. That number fluctuates daily. People go on, take off their, their properties.
And discuss how that six percent is allowed?
Yep, I sure will, absolutely. Um, out of that six percent, we've got a, a chart up here in just a minute that I'll, I'll show you. Um, we do not receive any money from the county, nor do we from the city either, so we're strictly hotel motel tax. Um, we're not a membership organization like a chamber, that would be counterproductive, um, so we, we don't do that. Uh, but the good news is, is our tax base, which is the occupancy tax, continues to grow. Um, again, the Airbnb numbers continue to grow as well. It's only, I'm sorry, it's, uh, it's Airbnb is people that put their homes in on Airbnb and, and you could have a home, you could rent a room to someone, uh, for them to... Well, it's not a bed and breakfast, it's, it's different than a bed and breakfast, but it's...
Similar application, but I don't know, BRBO.
BRBO. Yeah. So, BRBOs are...
All towns and cities and all over have those, and they're very reasonable compared to staying like at a hotel or whatever.
A lot of like traveling nurses use them, things like that. There's some of them that wants more of a homesteading than a hotel. Uh, so, but they're, they're very popular, and especially if you go to cities like San Francisco and places like that, there are thousands of them. Um, so, but our numbers continue to grow, and, and, um, so we will continue hopefully to have a, a higher, um, opportunity to have increased revenue. And that's the thing about what our office does, if we don't have a good year, our revenues go down, if we have a good year, they go up. So we kinda are self-sufficient, we gotta do well if we wanna have higher, uh, higher revenues. Um, so as far as the breakdown, six percent's collected, okay? And out of that six percent, three percent goes directly to the bond that was, that was used to build our convention center. So out of that six percent, three percent is, is, goes to, to debt service. That leaves three percent. Out of that second three percent, one percent goes to the convention center because the convention center is managed by a private organization, um, they lease it from the city, and the city, I think, likes us because they are responsible for the P and L, the profit and loss on the convention center. But in order to do that, they do receive one percent out of that six percent. So that leaves our organization with two percent. So we are funded from the two percent out of the six percent. So, um, it does create some challenges for us, that's why we have less staff than most organizations like us in cities our size, um, but it's the, it's the formula that will stay through twenty-six, twenty-seven. That's when the debt service is paid off on the convention center, at least the first part, so. Um, so we have to rely on the occupancy tax and the two percent that we get. Um, currently, right now, as of, um, our April revenues, we're up seven percent, uh, over last year. That's great. Um, our budget is calculated with five percent increase, so we've got a little bit of wiggle room because we have to have our budget done several months before we actually know exactly how much money that we're getting. Um, so we estimated a five percent increase in occupancy tax collections. Um, we will use those funds to increase our convention marketing, our sports marketing, and our leisure travel marketing. And, um, the good thing about it is that our ADRs, which that stands for average daily rate at our hotels, and our RevPAR, which stands for revenue per available room at our hotels, are going up. So that's important as well. So if you have, you know, stagnant occupancy, but you have increase in, in RevPAR and ADR, you're still gonna increase your occupancy tax levels. Um, so we look at that very carefully, and, uh, it's important for us to keep track of, of those trends as well. So there's our revenue sources here. Um, again, most of it is through occupancy tax. We do have a capital reserve account, um, which we are able to tap into, it's for tourism, and that will help fund our sports tourism, uh, marketing program. Uh, and then, of course, we use a little bit of fund balance when we need to, and we do have fund balance utilized for this year. We won't need it next year moving forward, but we are going to spend quite a bit of money on rebranding and putting together a new website as well. Um, and then you've got, uh, your miscellaneous revenue, which is basically our, our investments or our, our CD. So here's our budget, um, just short of one-point-six million dollars. Um, the occupancy tax collections will be one million, two-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, twenty dollars and eight cents. Capital reserve will be two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars, that's the excess that they're collecting, um, from, uh, debt service, so we have a little bit more of, of, uh, what we're not paying to debt service for the, uh, bond for the convention center. The miscellaneous revenue again is, um, the investment that we have in our, in our CD, and then the fund balance that we're gonna use is ninety-nine thousand dollars. Um, I've got an asterisk next to the fund balance, uh, I don't think we're gonna use all that fund balance. The way that our revenues are coming in, they're higher than what I'm, uh, projecting, so I think we'll probably, uh, have that closer to sixty thousand dollars on fund balance. And then once we have our rebranding and our web, um, things done, then we won't need that for next year, so. We are healthy in our fund balance, we are not allowed to take only a certain amount of our fund balance, we have to keep a certain amount in reserve in case the economy goes south because, again, we're funded only by the hotel motel tax. So if that level goes down, we wanna make sure we have a reserve to continue to market Pitt County. Um, budget highlights include an increase in marketing, we always wanna market, that's what we do, that's why we're here, is to market Pitt County. Um, and to do that, we wanna increase our advertising, we're going much more in the direction of digital advertising than we are print advertising, uh, but we'll still stay with some of the traditional advertisers like Local Palette and our state magazine, things that we know that are heavily read in North Carolina. Um, we will completely rebrand our website, redo our website. Um, it really takes, it's a lot of money, but it takes about fifty thousand dollars to really do the type of website that we need as a tourism entity, and that's what our competitors are doing. And we've always spent eight or ten thousand dollars on a website, and there's a market difference on what ours looks like and what theirs looks like, and we need to be competitive. Um, our sports council, very excited about that. As of July first, we will have two of our staff members, we're not adding staff, uh, but two of our staff members will be dedicated to sports. Um, the tournaments that we are bringing, it's amazing amount of money that's coming into our city and county because of the tournaments that we're bringing. Um, and you have to remember that when you and I go to a conference, I just got back last night from Knoxville, it was me. That was it, and I was in a meeting room all day, and I spent some money in Knoxville that night. Well, when we have our sports people come, there's probably seven or eight support travelers that come with them. That means the athlete and then mom and dad and brother and sister, and so you've got seven or eight people spending money per one athlete in your community. That's why it's so lucrative right now. And it's not just youth sports, it's senior sports as well. We hold the three-on-three state basketball tournament for senior games, and it's funny, you'll see seventy, seventy-five, eighty-year-olds competing, and then you'll see their kids watching, and then their grandkids watching. So it goes both ways. And then we need to invest in some CRM resources, and that's customer relationship management resources. We are getting to the point where we're big enough that we need some software systems to help us out, keep track of all of our leads, all of our leisure travel opportunities. When we get five hundred leads from Southern Living Magazine, we've gotta be able to put those somewhere and track those leads and try to market to get those folks back, uh, and spend money in Pitt County. Um, again, as I, uh, stated before, out of that three percent that we get, that first three percent goes to the convention center, bond repayment. The second three percent, one cent of that occupancy tax goes for, uh, marketing of the Greenville Convention Center. So out of the money that we are utilizing, that one-point-five-nine-nine, four-hundred-and-eight-thousand dollars has to go directly to the convention center for their marketing funds. So we don't have any, we, we do have approval on what they market and how they market, but by law and through the inter-local agreement, that is their money. Um, so we disperse that on a monthly basis, uh, to them. And that's basically it. And we, we, um, just continue to, to work to market Greenville and Pitt County. Um, we've made an awful lot of strides in the last several years. People that come here for the first time are really impressed with what's going on in this county, so, um, we're just appreciative of your support, um, and we're always looking for partners to, to continue to, to move us forward as a county and, you know, start, uh, taking business from Charlotte and Raleigh and all those places. We love when that happens, so. Any questions that I can answer for you guys? Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm done. Um, a little bit of a predilection. We always look forward to hearing from you because you always come forward and you never ask for money.
I know.
No, no, but you know that you get support from us and that, I mean, and it's not been anything but better every single year.
Well, thank you.
Commend you for that.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Tom?
Our board is obsessed with ECU sports, football, baseball, and so on.
It's important.
Yeah. If you could put in a percentage, 20%, 10%, just dart at the board.
I can, let me do it this way. So here's the maximum economic impact that we can have at the stadium capacity that we have. If the game time's right, 3:30 game time, if they're playing well, if they have a quality opponent, and if they're putting people in the seats, it's, it's 5 million dollars per game. Yes, per game. I can tell you for the first time this year, and this is the first time this has ever happened, we had hotel rooms available all season long. So you can see, and we had a lot of people calling me and asking what I could do about it, and I said, I can't put on a helmet, so I can't do a whole lot about it. They do worse. But it, it has a huge impact. I mean, the 7% increase that you see for this year is mainly because we had a hurricane. And, and I, I don't want to increase revenue that way. That's an awful way to increase revenue, but when you have a hurricane, you have people that are displaced, you have adjusters, you have all sorts of people that are involved that have to come and have a base operations.
You anticipated my second question.
Yeah, so that's, we've gotten that question a lot. I mean, you know, if, we would rather have a full football stadium and increase that way, but, you know, that's kind of out of our control.
And?
Yeah, I'm excited, yes.
I don't have a question, but I just have a comment. Thank you for launching the African-American Cultural Trail, and of course, I'm asked to the Sycamore Hill Gateway Project that will be launched, that, that's launching downtown commons that will certainly bring people to Pitt County. That would be an asset to, to bringing people to Pitt County and spending money. So, thank you.
You've got three, three different areas that we're looking at. And like I say, I see it as an economic development project and a good community project, but you've got the National Coalition of Black Meeting Planners, which is the fastest-growing meeting planning segment in the hospitality industry. And we're actually going to their trade show for the first time because they're looking for destinations, but they're only, they're not looking for convention facilities only, they're looking for a cultural opportunity to add on to their conventions. So that's one reason we need something like this, is to be more competitive on the, on the convention side. The second is on the leisure side, so we want to attract family reunions and other groups. And this will help that as well. And the third is leisure travel. I was just up in DC, and I went to the African-American History Museum, and on purpose, I looked around. I was like, let me see the demographic of the people that are in here. And it was probably 70, 30, you know, African-American versus Caucasian. There's a lot of people that aren't of African-American heritage that want to learn, so we want to give them that diverse opportunity as well. So, you know, we'll have group-based tours, we'll have people that'll walk around on their phones, and, and we'll have different stops, and they can just press an app and they can do it by themselves. All that adds up. So if you have 10 people coming by themselves, they're going to spend money. If you have a group, they're going to spend money. But we just want to make sure that we're a destination that has diverse offerings. So that's kind of a, but, you're welcome. And I know that you were, I got to get back to you on that other thing, on the...
Yeah. I asked you for some money.
I know. You got to come to the board and ask them for money. That's, that's the great thing about having a board, Chris. You can come to, and I'll just smile. Yeah, so, but thank you. Yeah, you're welcome.
Thanks, Andrew.
You hear from me enough. Okay, good. You're welcome. All right. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Appreciate what you're doing. Okay. Discussion questions, directives. If we've got anything that we would like to, to say or give Brian or Scott any directions relative to anything we heard today, or you have your opportunity now? Well, we'll just start with if you have something, so if you're ready, just raise your hand and let me know.
You all would, just kind of looking forward to tomorrow's presentation.